Mr. Serone?
Here.
Ms. Doyle?
Here.
Mr. Gatewood?
Present.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Plogar?
Present.
Ms. Simelton?
Present.
Ms. Swanson?
Present.
Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
4.1, public comment. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank the public for attending tonight's meeting. We value the feedback we receive from our residents and encourage everyone to take an active interest in their public school system. Residents interested in speaking to the Board this evening are asked to have completed a comment card and presented it to the secretary to the Board. When the secretary calls your name, I ask that you come to the microphone, state your name for the public record, and provide your feedback. Please note that comments are limited to five minutes per person and that no discussion of personnel matters or responses to questions are permitted. The Board does not participate in discussion during public comment. Follow-up to your questions or concerns will be addressed by administration through the contact information provided on the comment card. Thank you.
Michelle Trager?
Good evening. Is this, okay? Uh, Michelle Trager, at the Ford Children's District. Next month is National FASD Awareness Month, people alcohol's factor disorder. And September 9th is FASD Awareness Day. At the end of last full year, I received voicemail from Assistant Superintendent Dolklis that the district would recognize FASD Awareness Month on the district calendar again. But on the calendar I received through my youngest student's school, September is Hispanic Heritage and Suicide Prevention, no mention of FASD. It's not too late to correct this omission, and I can provide information about that immediately. The message I received also said that the district-
District provides training in executive functioning issues and on being trauma-informed, which are important aspects in working with FASD. But I suspect the exact functioning training is for special ed teachers and that the trauma-informed training is for student support staff such as social workers, psychologists, and counselors. The prevalence for FASD conservatively, reminder, 1 in 20. More than twice the prevalence for autism, that is over 97,000 students in Illinois and more than 850 in this district. Many of these students have not been diagnosed and many have not been identified for special ed services. So it's the general ed teachers and the deans and principals encountering these students. Due to increased alcohol consumption during the pandemic, we expect the prevalence to increase. Does our early childhood staff have any training in FASD at all? And as a public school district, we must adhere to child find, it's federal law. Trauma informed is more than asking about feelings and observing behaviors. It is understanding how trauma actually changes the brain in regard to learning and effectively responding to that. Damage incurred in utero is prenatal trauma. In California, their state senate just passed Bill 1016, which will make FASD a named disorder under OHI for IDEA. Here in Illinois, the Office of State Senator Sarah Feigenholtz has reached out about introducing a senate resolution to declare a specific day to acknowledge and bring more awareness to FASD. And don't forget that our district's Congresswoman Lauren Underwood has signed on as a co-sponsor to the proposed bipartisan federal FASD legislation. And we really need to push that because if we don't get it passed by January, we start all over again with the next congress. In your Envision 308 update tonight, you will talk about teaching and reinforcing common behavioral expectations. You will talk about expectations for behaviors, supportive discipline, and integrating SEL with academics. You can't do that if you don't learn about FASD. You will talk about training regarding suicide prevention and implementing programming for mental health. You can't do that if you don't learn about FASD. Remember, over 90% of individuals with FASD have a co-occurring mental health diagnosis. And the rate of adolescent males with FASD who reported a serious suicide attempt was 19.5 times higher than national norms for adolescent males. You will talk about funding. If the federal legislation passes, there may be opportunities through the Department of Education. You will talk about parent education and opportunities to involve parents in the positive development of the district. I'm trying really hard on my end. I know the professional develop plan is set years in advance and you can't just add or require more trainings. The contracts are what they are. But there are so many excellent and free FASD training resources online, and some of them do offer continuing ed credits. I have a lot of work to do at the state and national levels, but I'm trying to make right here where I live a better place. And I'm keeping it on your radar tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And 5.1 is a presentation on Envision 308. We are now in year two of our strategic plan. At the beginning of each year, we feel it's important to cover any changes within the plan, and tonight we'll highlight some of those changes. So, Mrs. Dolklis, would you like to start us off?
I sure would. So, you've all had an opportunity to see this and read through it, so I'm not going to go through each slide. So, these slides at the beginning have not changed since the last time around. What I have done is gone through and just looked at dropping the column that was the 2122 school year and then added more details into the 2023. And tonight I'll just go through our top 10 changes. So, if you look first here at improving literacy and instruction, we're going to really work on interventions and data and then also going through and making sure that our teams understand how to use that data. The next piece with making a plan to support all the behavioral pieces, again, common theme, the interventions and the data piece to add to that as well as looking across the district and the school teams. And then this will be brand new. We did not work on this the last school year, but this piece is working with having more creativity and pieces around that with our K-12 communication and curriculum to add more of how do we develop and design critical thinking and creativity? And then looking on to that is also using more of our school improvement process to include more data and looking at the health of our interventions. So not only putting in more of our interventions in place, but making sure that we look at the data as those results to know whether our interventions are working or not. Then looking at centering equity, we are looking at creating three and five-year goals to bring through the Board Advisory Equity Committee and then bringing on to our school board. And then we really want to, and we started this this summer already, creating a more robust program to bring onboarding for our new administrators, and that will continue throughout this school year. The safe nurturing learning environments, a lot of what we will be doing there is training around signs of suicide and those pieces that we need to work on with that. And then staff and students' ability to collaborate and work on. We're implementing more conflict resolution skills and bringing that into the curriculum, especially at our K-5 Elementary Social Studies program. And then to continue my top 10, to create a way for parents to get more of an idea of what we are doing, we'll be working on joint efforts between special ed, general ed, everyone to have a combined comprehensive list of meetings and ways to collaborate with us. You'll see more of that here in the next few weeks. And then finally, the calendar of our annual reports on what we will be bringing forward to give you updates on pieces of Envision 308 and the tentative dates for the school year. And then our recommendation, as is our tradition and our custom, to go through, we believe that we are making progress with Envision 308 in creating these new indicators, sharing them out with staff, and starting this important work for the entire school year. Questions?
Thank you for not making us go through a 34-page.
Agreed.
I have three.
Right ahead.
Question? All right, Slide 9. Okay, on Slide 9, you talked about increased availability of a variety of interventions and staff to support them. So, how many of those are either A, available during the school day? And B, able to be taught by, like I know we hired some interventionists? What my concern with that is specifically, because I do this job, is not everybody can do physics, not everybody can do chemistry, not everybody can do geometry, not everybody can do AP Calc.
So, this is pre-K through 12th grade when we're talking about increasing interventions and looking at, you know, how that works. I can give you more details about elementary or junior high, but it sounds like your questions are more geared toward high school.
Only because I teach high school, but like my concern isn't just a high school concern. My concern is how do you, like, at a junior high level, I imagine most of it is pretty... What am I trying to say? It's not AP Chem or AP Physics or AP, you know what I mean? Like, it's something that you could, with a book, probably figure out. My concern is when we get into the upper levels and then we start having courses where some kids need help and they need help during the school day, because quite frankly, some of these kids are going home and taking care of little brothers and sisters.
So, the focus for these interventions is really your fundamental reading and math skills as we work on those. It is not of the tutoring nature of helping along with AP Physics or those pieces. I don't, I agree with you that some of that needs to be done, but really what the focus is, is especially K-8 and even at our freshman level this year, focusing on students that don't have their fundamental skills in literacy or in math is what the focus of this is.
So are we going to add that to the next school year?
As you can see, the target here is improve literacy and math achievement by establishing all of these things. That's not saying that the other subjects aren't important. We'll be working on that piece, but a lot of what needs to happen in bringing along some of the other subjects is differentiation and providing support. And if they had their basics in literacy and math, I think that will also really help out the other core areas.
All right, so we'll circle back to that later. Slide 17, talked about signs of suicide. And I think that is a good point to bring up this, I'm intrigued by this, 99 FASD and how we could add that training into, because clearly that was part of... That's Slide 17, sorry. At the junior high and high school, because I imagine just like everything else, if you identify it early, it's probably better.
Sure. And there is training not just on for our special education classes or for our related services around trauma-informed on those pieces. We still are looking into that, and I apologize for the error about the calendar. I was assured that that was going to happen, so I will follow up with that as well.
Okay, but she also has a good point. Is our early learning staff?
Trained on that specific piece, no, but about identifying and helping along with cognitive functioning and trauma reformed, yes.
So what do you need from us to get that done?
I suppose a consensus from the Board that that's what you want me to do on specifics around that. I think we more tend to lean toward how are the symptoms or the signs and how to differentiate instruction and support and understand people's differences than to get to all the very specific disabilities. We treat more of what is needed to be educationally sound than identifying which or what caused the learning issues or the behaviors that might have come from trauma or a variety of things that have happened. I'm not saying that it's not a great idea and how we would build that awareness, but we need to build awareness around all of the different types of behaviors and pieces that come into our classrooms, too.
But we have some kind of tests for all of those other pieces. All I'm asking is, is there support from the Board to also include this in that piece?
Well, I would support you looking into it and giving a recommendation on how to do it and those types of steps. But I'm not going to dictate, you know, exactly what you should be doing.
Yeah, that's, that's what I mean. Yeah, I think that because of the nature of this particular situation ends up crossing into disciplinary issues more often than sometimes other things do even at younger ages. It's, it's probably worth identifying something about this, but I'm not trained to know what that should look like.
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed. I, we should just look into it, and since we have not done anything, we should look into it and then we can make a determination what we should do after that.
All right.
Agreed.
My last slide was, my last question was Slide 20. It talked about embedding instruction in conflict resolution. So maybe it's just clearly because we have a lot going on this year with staff. We had COVID, and then we had new curriculum, and then we had new SEL curriculum. And then, while I don't disagree that we should do something with conflict resolution, I am still struggling a little bit with have we made some of those SEL lessons that we're doing? Even if it's specifically at the high school level, have we made those more interactive? Or are we still just talking at kids instead of talking with kids? And conflict resolution for teachers, that's a big nut to crack. So on top of everything else that they're doing and revamping and adding to, I worry about adding one more thing. Not that it's not a good idea. I just, I-
I could not agree more. Looking at Envision 308, where we are right now feels like it's too much too soon. I feel as though our district, education in general, but our district specifically, we have to kind of push out like what's going on in the rest of the world and focus on where we are right now. And going back to what Ally said, how much more do we put on the plates of a staff that has spread so thin due to historic understaffing in, in education? But also, I think the Board has been very clear that we want to create not only psychologically safe and physically safe environment, we also know that that's the only way that students learn. And I just feel like right now, we're not there. And I think we're pushing forward without taking a step back to say, "Okay, what, what is most essential to do right now?" And I think all this is fantastic, and it does need to happen, and I'm not saying it doesn't. But what are the essentials right now of what we need to do? Putting more stuff on everybody's plate, including our administration, just doesn't seem like it's where we should be right now. And I struggle.
I think you could do this with deans. I think you have to start somewhere. I just, I'm not convinced that this is another add-on to an academic-
Can I add a different, ask a different question? There was a reason why you put it here. And there was a reason why you thought it was important. Can you explain why you thought it was important for this?
Sure. So, as one of the statements that the 3,000 people said that I met with and combined and put all these pieces together, they felt it was really important to build an inclusive learning community that was supportive of all of the people within it and that staff and students needed some explicit training on how we treat one another to have supportive climate and culture. And we did not launch a ton about that last year. And certainly, as we look toward this year and we looked at all the things that we needed to do to implement our climate for learning, learning how to have disagreements with one another while still being respectful still seemed high on the list. But-
And, and I think that you've weighed in, in all the discussions I've had, you weigh, you consider that in every decision that you make is, how implementable is this? Are we overwhelming our staff? So, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying it's not too much. I'm not saying it, you know, it isn't too much or whatever, you know, whatever the opposite of that is. But we have to make improvements.
Like the training that already happened around de-escalation and responding with our teaching assistants to how do they, you know, handle conflict that de-escalates? That's even part of this. How we, when we talk about our new social studies curriculum and we're going to do inquiry and people are going to be, kids are going to say, "Well, just like I'm thinking of an elementary unit that I just reviewed before I came here about when European settlers came here and the Native Americans, and they're supposed to inquire and look at different perspectives." There's going to be disagreements, and we have to teach students how to have those opinions and to be able to back up their evidence, but still listen to opposing views and talk through those. And that's a part of the social studies training that we'll be doing for elementary staff on September 6th. When we even have amplifying student voice, I'm thinking about how they handle different disagreements and pose, there's so many teachable moments to do that instead of, "Shh, don't say that", to say, "Can you restate that in another way and still be respectful and listen?" And some of our teachers are already wonderfully magical at this. But we also need to be real explicit that that's what we want. We don't want to just avoid conflict. That's part of civics and part of doing these pieces is having your opinion, but still being able to be flexible and listen to others.
So, totally appreciate that perspective, and I think right now, obviously, conflict resolution and teaching those skills to kids is even more important when conflicts get escalated very, very quickly with social media and everything that kids and parents both are involved in. One of the things that, going all the way back to 2020, when you had started this whole thing for this Envision 308 with the 3,000 people, it was 2019 and 2020, we had paused this completely during the COVID years because we didn't want to overwhelm the system. And I know that that was really hard, because if there's one thing that educators find hard, it's not improving education right now, because the kids keep growing even if we pause. But I've continued to be concerned about the speed at which we're piling on more. I would rather see this stay in something else new go, but that's not for me to decide. But what it is for, for me to say is that I don't value one specific line item on our Envision 308 plan more than I value the psychological safety, the well-being, the mental health of all of our employees and all of our students. And I don't want to lose sight of that in the rush to have a strategic plan, make change, embed this into our system so that it can't get out and that this is just what we're going to be at in five years. We might not be there in five years. It might be seven or eight, but what do we prioritize? For me, what I'm prioritizing more is the exhaustion and the overwhelm and the understaffing that we're having. And to me, I, I would rather see us stick with that for this moment than insert something new, no matter how worthy it is, and it's worthy.
So I think that what we would probably like to do is see the results of our culture and climate survey to either validate or invalidate what you're saying-
Yeah.
-around exhaustion and all these other things as opposed to articulating something that may or may not be the case. So I think we should, we should look at that and we should look at it very closely, you know, before we start taking things away or adding things on.
Can I just, I guess, when I look at this with my teacher hat on, training the staff, like I 100% understand where you're going, and I think that's valuable time spent. Where I get concerned is where you're trying to embed it into curriculum. Like, I, I feel like that might, for me, be the overwhelming part.
Yeah. Having, yeah, having-
I think, I think training staff on conflict resolution-
Is different.
Is, is a different kind of beast for me than actually-
Recreating all your lesson plans for the third times in a year.
Look, I, I think I understand where you're going with it. I just, yeah, we should watch, we should read the survey first. I just, it feels all very overwhelming.
And at the start of the year, it, like, this is outlining the work for the whole year. You know, this isn't what we're rolling out in September.
That's not the only thing we got going on either.
So that, and that's a really important perspective, Faith, that you're bringing to this with your expertise. And I think also what we're seeing is another important piece aside from just the educational achievement portion of the whole district as a whole, is all I'm trying to say. So I'm looking forward to seeing those results as well.
You said it much better than I did, Lori. Thank you. I, I just want us to take a pause, that's all, and I know we have done that before. But what people were talking about in 2019 and what we're talking about now is just, there's a lot that happened in between that we need to kind of build a protective bubble around our staff and students. All of this is necessary and should be a part of it. What I was confused about when I read this on my own is, why did we specifically pull that out? Because, for instance, as a parent, and obviously I'm not on the academia side, but as a parent, I would assume this is embedded in many of the things that we are teaching. And so to see this as something called out for 2022, 23, I was like, what am I missing?
We've, for instance, we have over 100 brand-new teachers. We have lots of new administrators. A lot of what we already have embedded, if we don't retrain and re-bring it to the front, we lose it. And it is, this is not like we'll redo all curriculum, but it is around having a conversation of how do you make a classroom, which is a huge part of our climate for learning, into an inclusive learning environment that supports all students? That level of trust is the bottom, you know, of our five things that we really want in every single classroom is creating a classroom that's trust-driven so that students and staff can learn their best. And without some extra skills on how to continue to talk about conflict resolution, I see us losing out. I agree with you that our staff is stressed. I would agree with you that my department is rather stressed. But we also have to continue to build some plans and design and improve new things so that two months from now, our classrooms are in a better place than they were when we started. And I listened to so many teachers very rightfully say how conflict was hard, harder last year than it's been in years past as people came back in and were kind of, kind of polarized. You listen to even across the nation, you know, what that looks like and that how do we help our students still have their own opinions, still have their own, you know, perspectives, but come to a conversation, even if it's around a math problem, about, here's what I thought, here's what you thought, without being intimidating or without making students feel unincluded.
Yeah, I was, I was going to look at it at that angle as well, or present it at, at, in that angle is, you know, when you learn something, you implement it and it makes your life easier. So it, you know, it-
Except for the cost of change, right?
Yeah, it could in fact, you know, reduce stress, and that's-
Over time, my argument would be that that will happen over time, up to a certain level of stress of any individual. Once they are past that stress level, even giving somebody something different to do in that moment-
It's nice to lower the baseline, though.
Yeah, eventually, but maybe not all at the same time. And this is a pretty ambitious five-year plan. It's pretty front-loaded, and we want to do all the things at all, all the times right away, right now. But at some point, the cost, the tool that the, just the act of changing things makes on human being outweighs any good that lowering the baseline could do. Like, that's just true of humans. You know what I mean? So that's where I'm trying to see, where are we at in that balance? Because my concern is that we're, we're maybe a little bit closer to that than I had thought. And I'd like to see the results of that survey.
Okay.
Well, I would like to see student voice, and I would like to see educator voice, and I think that's what we're talking about here. So if they're demanding it, then I think we have to listen. And if they're not demanding it, then I think I agree, we have to take it easy on them. And I think that's what has to drive this.
Agreed. My, my, I got, I'll make one comment on what we're saying, and then I'll give my question if there's nothing else. But I guess, not an educator, not in it, but I think about the combination between curriculum- But I guess, not an educator, not in it, but I think about the combination between curriculum and teaching and classroom management. And I think that if, if any teacher doesn't have proper classroom management, then the curriculum could be lost. And that's what I see in training the staff on, around inclusion and conflict resolution. That's what that is in my, in my, I guess, perspective. Because if we, if we don't do it continuously, then the instruct, any instruction that we're implementing could be lost. And then it still would be off or not. So that's just my, my two stand. I could be wrong. You know, you guys can correct me. Second point is, it was actually just an overall observation as I was reading this. And when I got to the last slide, I started thinking about making progress as the, as the barometer. But then I also was on, I think it was slide 30. Yes, slide 30. And so create a comprehensive list for parents and education engagement. But I started thinking about the community. And I, and this is a general question. I don't know if there's an answer right now. But how does the community, those in the community or even potential residents moving to the district, how do they rate us in regards to how we're doing? And in my mind, I thought, how is there a correlation between SD 308, Envision 308, and the school report card? And how does it, how, how, how are the results that we're driving here impact that? Of course, I went to look and, you know, most of the data for 2020 is not even in there. But, but that's, but I would, and I would venture to say, based on questions I'm getting, is when people are looking at, how is our district doing? That's where they're looking. And so I just wanna make sure that we're under community partnerships and how we're communicating it. That has become, and I know we have our great barometer, I mean, our scorecard on the last page. But I think that, you know, especially even to how the state determines if how and if we're being successful. There are some, some opportunities on that scorecard that, on the report card, that we have to make sure that we're making progress as well. So that somehow, when we're giving our updates later on throughout the year, that we're drawing some correlation in order just to help the community.
Right, I agree with you. The bottom half of our dashboard is blank at, at the moment. We haven't had great state testing data to put that in there. As part of our, you know, student learning presentation, and I do look forward to having a more robust student learning presentation this November after the data comes back and we're allowed to, you know, talk about it in open with everybody. And filling in those different pieces such as graduation rate, the percentage of students that passing the reading test, math, all of those pieces, if that's what you meant. I know that there's a link to the, you know, the school report card that the state does for us. But the data and the information on it right now isn't that great because we've had so many students out as the state has changed tests or students haven't been in session. So I agree with you. There's more than just these reports that tell the picture of our progress. I also think it would be poor if I didn't say, working on the literacy framework or working on the math framework, especially getting K2 done very, very well, it's gonna take a while before it shows up on ninth grade reading scores. You know, it's not churning around and making really great improvements in literacy and math at the younger grades. Takes a while for that to be realized later on. It isn't a one-year, we should see.
But even saying that, I think is the most important part. Because if, if it does take a while, but, but they're only looking, they, meaning the community, is only looking at that as the barometer of success and they're not seeing the progress or seeing any results. If they understand that, I think that that could help with the perception that, one, we're not doing anything or we're not improving. Because that's not true.
Right. And then last, for, so when you walk away from here today regarding the slide that we were discussing, what is it that you need to know from us? Like, is, like, if you walk away from here today, go back to the office and tomorrow you want to start doing A, B, and C? Or do we have, you know, I just need to understand, like, what do we need to share with you?
I see Dr. Sparland wanna talk, so I don't wanna say something that he's not about to say, but.
You, you can go ahead, but Faith, but you know, I can see how, you know, we just put a 34-page plan in front of you and I can see how that could feel, can feel overwhelming. You know, we have this, this is, we, we all admit and we all agree that this is a strong five-year strategic plan. And it's one year, you know, each year, each year is built upon the, the previous year. That's what, you know, Faith, it just highlighted the top 10, the top 10 items that we felt that was a change, that we felt that was important to bring out today. And if you really, if you really look at it and, you know, zero down onto what we're talking about, you're not talking, some of these things that she just highlighted aren't that big of changes or they're not gonna put that much stress on the system. In fact, I think if we do some, a lot of the things that she just mentioned better, it's going to alleviate stress. I mean, for example, develop a robust administrator onboarding program. That's something we did this year. And I, you know, and I, and I can tell you from what we did this year, people that are new administrators are feeling more comfortable in their positions because of the systems that were put into place. So I think it's, I think that's important to keep in mind when we're talking about, you know, and I, and I understand what everybody's saying. You know, we have to look at the workload, make sure we're not overwhelming people. I do think it's important to look at those survey results and that should weigh into this conversation. But I also don't wanna lose sight of that we have a strong strategic plan. I don't wanna lose momentum in the areas of teaching and learning, social-emotional learning, and DEI, all the things that we're talking about, because it is like a scaffold, just like most curriculum is. One thing builds on the next from during the school year and from grade level to grade level.
But I think if.
As long as everyone doesn't quit first. The very point you just said was actually the one that I circled. It says, develop a robust administrator onboarding program. And I have to be very honest, this summer, I spent more time than I ever have hearing about the, a lot of the interviewing process and the, the lack of integrity in the interviewing process across the board from both people that have come in new to our district and those within our district. Before we even bring them on, we need to step back and we need to say to ourselves, how are we hiring people and how are we retaining them? Then the part B to that is how are we onboarding them and supporting them moving forward? I can't, I, I'm not an academic expert. I can't talk about differentiation and I won't. I will leave that to the experts. But one thing that I am is a culture curator and an HR practitioner. And what I have seen is, ever since I decided I wanted to run for the board, that we have a retention problem. Then you add COVID on top of it and that's a whole nother situation. We have got to learn how to take care of our staff and want them to stay here. And we haven't done it well. And so before we even get to this stage, I just think we need to back up and, and talk about and be honest with ourselves. How we support our staff, how we bring them on board, how we let them know what our vision is and how we say to them, is this a good fit for this district? Is this particular candidate a good fit for a district? And putting some equity into the hiring process. Either we are going to make positions available to all candidates and the candidates are going to be able to interview, or are we gonna continue to handpick candidates? And I, I just have to say, I'm being fully transparent, but we have a lot of issues to fix.
If I could for one second, I'm actually, I'd like to talk about a slide that's actually not highlighted because I think it's like a teachable moment here, which is slide 25. And with everything that's been said in the arena that exists out in the general public, I noticed on slide 25 that we, we have a goal, right, of, you know, build a 20% fund reserve by 2026. And if I'm reading this correctly, it says, our current five-year projection puts us at 10.5%. And I understand that there are, I mean, we have a lot of buildings, we have a lot of places and we have a lot of needs, right? And in some cases, if I, if I'm incorrect, somebody can tell me what I'm about to say is incorrect. But in some cases, due to financial cuts over the past few years, we've, we've put a lot of things off that have been detrimental. And if I'm incorrect, somebody can correct me. There have been people in the community that have been upset because we have had to not just borrow money to make ends meet, but in some cases, we have had to borrow money where we have actually given other school districts interest. And I think last year, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know if it was another school district, but we gave tens of thousands of dollars in interest away. Am I, am I correct, Dr. Sparland, in saying that?
Yeah, you're correct in saying that, Jared. It's been a practice of 308 since 2004, 2005. It's been a very long time.
And, and I see these stories and people get upset. And then I also see, though, a counter story, which is, you know, well, we need this, or we need that, or we need this. And I, and I get it. Like, I understand. Hey, listen, I, there's plethora of things I would like as well. But if you see this in here, every single one of those needs that we think exist or everything that we add on to that list, or decide we're gonna leapfrog on to that list, is gonna keep us further and further from getting 20%. And you, somebody can tell me if I'm wrong, but in some cases, we have sent tens of thousands of dollars to other school districts out of our taxpayer money, correct? So that's great that we, we get local money that comes here. I'm loving that. That's awesome. But also realize that we may have, anytime we leapfrog things, we may have to then turn around and take our, that same taxpayer money and then write tens of thousands of dollars in checks to another school district that's not ours. So I, I want that to be understood that, you know, we, we can, we can write a narrative that looks like one thing, but you cannot complain later about, hey, why are we giving, was it, what was it last year in interest that we paid out? Dr. Sparland, do we remember?
Thirty-five thousand?
Thirty-five thousand. So we can't be upset that $35,000 is just going someplace else later because we decided, well, we had to find a way to pay for this, that, or the other. I, I just wanna make sure that we understand those, those two pieces of the narrative and align them. Because I, I, you know, I want, I wanna build the reserves just as much as anyone and that's why that goal is there so that we don't have tens of thousands of dollars just leaking out of the district. And so I, I'll be quiet, but I wanted to make sure that I talked about this because I think it was a teachable moment.
There'll probably be a lot more this year because the rates are up, so.
But to your point, Jared, every time we turn over an employee, we are re, first of all, it's a hit to morale. And second of all, it's a hit to our bottom line. It's a restart. So if we don't start addressing these issues from the culture perspective and building a place that people want to work and want to stay, even if they're not the highest paid, we are shooting ourselves in the foot. And to your point as well of sending that money, many districts who do have these reserves, that is their insulation for inflation and we don't have that at all. So right now, when other districts can pull from their reserves for all these inflation costs, maintenance, products and so forth, we don't have that opportunity.
And so when I hear someone say, oh, so you have the money, I, I want them to come down here. I would invite them to come down here when we have to sit here and pass one of these TAWs
Yes.
and talk about who we're borrowing from, how much we're sending, and if that's okay.
And can we stop ti, like, can we not tiptoe around it? Like, let's talk about that, all of us here would love to go be able and build a parking lot if we had the money. We do not have the money. And it is not a choice that we are, we really have to make. It's not a choice. We don't have a choice in front of us.
And I appreciate the conversation on the larger financial. Today is key step number one, talking about a tentative budget. Key number two is in December, when we talk about the levy process. And then the last is our cash flow and our projections. So what you're talking about is kind of, it's kind of wrapped up in those three different financial steps. So I'm, I'm happy to share with you today the tentative budget. And then that'll answer some of your questions, but it's going to be a journey as we go down where the district has been in 2004, where we've been with our building and our construction and our debt service. And then when we levy, it will, we'll have more information. And then when we talk about cash flow in February, March, April, and where we are. So we'll talk about that. And I think you're right, we need to make that even more transparent and we need to focus on three salient points for the community so they understand why our financial situation is the way it is. So we can do that.
It seems like no ma, like, even though we may not have been the ones making those decisions, we are the ones that are, have to make better decisions moving forward.
I really appreciate you saying that. That brings up another point, which, not to get us too far off, but you're right. A lot of decisions were made and sometimes you have to use the funding sources you have available to you and you need to make a decision. For instance, if I have roofs and I need to replace $14 million, I replace roofs. But guess what? In 23 years, I need 14 more million dollars to replace those roofs. Can we get a scheduled maintenance plan and build, build that in? So rather than making it somebody else's issue 10, 15 years down the road, can we actually put that foundation of spending? Now, it's easier said than done because there's crises that come up.
If we had increased the levy all those years, we would be in a very different position today. And for that to be said out loud is incredibly important and for people to even understand that. It's taken me a very long time to understand it. But those decisions that were made years ago add up to almost 50 million-ish. Where would we be right now against the 77 million in capitalized maintenance that we have? A far different place. But we're not. We're 50 million behind. So that's where we're.
And there's, and there's a few things that could have, you know, headed that off. We also had the debate as a community twice, right, that could we have gotten to reserves quicker and, and the community spoke? And so the community said, no, we, we didn't wanna go that route, which is fine. That's the community's decision and we all have to respect that. But we have to understand at the same time that that's the route we decided to take as a community. We decided that. And it's going to take longer to get there. And it's going to take longer to have that, that buffer as well.
Okay. So thank you guys for that. And we can have more of that discussion when.
One clarification point, just on Jenny's point. The 50 million is not because of the lack of levy. That was in, in 2004 when we had facility projects and we were promised funding. The total is $50 million on what was promised there. The, the under-leveying was another impact, but that 50 million.
I think it's cumulative effect.
Yes, it's a huge cumulative effect.
Thank you. So Faith, are you?
Well, I just, I'm still struggling for what I was just told. So that's okay. I think that, no, 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 we were getting there and that was important, too. I think, but I haven't heard from everybody, so is my takeaway that we have a little bit of freedom to back off of the accelerator if need be. But that also means that some things aren't gonna get done. And even tonight, as we met, it was, okay, well, you're doing this for liter, the same math, but what are you doing for science and social studies? And you're doing this for this and this, but what about these other trainings that need to happen? And they're all great stuff. We have to make some really hard decisions with the little amount of time that we have from staff and be able to get these things done. So I think you're asking me to revisit Envision 308 and take some things off.
Where I'm coming from is if students and teachers are asking for it, then I'm all for it. If students and teachers are saying, we need, we need breaks, like this is too much, then yeah, I say apply the breaks.
When do we get that climate and culture survey?
Well, and on top of it, the data that you're getting back, are our students reading at level? Are our students, is our, right? And those, that's the answer right there. Let's focus on our data, what our data is telling us and what we have the capability of doing right now. We have to have third graders that can read and, and spell and do all these other things and math and so forth. So I guess I'm just, that's where I'm struggling is, can we get them to level based on data?
Yes, but not in the next two months.
Right, right.
And as you saw at the beginning of the presentation, a lot of it was training staff on how to use data, training staff to get more interventions, training in those pieces, and really focusing at our early grades. Even, you know, pre where the states, you know, the state does most of its assessment, all of its assessment, other than a little bit of kids for kindergarten and third grade and up. But the magic of where we needed to be to have an equal playing field for all students to be able to move forward. to be able to move forward is foundational skills in literacy and math. So what gets reported on a state report card, while it's the end game, it doesn't give you a whole lot of great data how you're getting toward before the final score.
When you can't have great data if you don't have a good assessment either.
And we do at the elementary grades.
Cool.
Dr. Sparland, I think you need to be able to come to this board and say, this is, this is where we were in twenty nineteen, but we have some critical, basic things we need to take care of, so we are going to focus on those and, and push some of these other things back. We need to hear that. I don't think, I don't think we are doing anyone a favor by not hearing that.
Yeah, I would defer to Dr. Sparland, too, from, and Faith, but, but as, as well as that land, so I don't want to necessarily give you the guidance on it. I would prefer that you all tell us, no, we do have to.
They've done this, they're experiencing this, they've implemented, they've, you know, that this is, um, not new to them.
No.
Um, and I, I appreciate the plan. I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Yes.
I appreciate the plan, and I, I appreciate how much thought you've put into this and the expertise.
But to Jared's point, too, what's the data, what are the teachers saying?
Yes. And we have heard from many student ambassador candidates over the last couple of weeks. We've heard from them last year. We've heard from our staff, mental health awareness, mental health support, mental health, mental health, mental health. So again, creating that psychologically safe environment for them to even be able to read and math and all of that other stuff that's critically important.
This whole discussion came out of them trying to implement that. That's why I'm so confused about this. I, I don't understand, um.
The conflict resolution, all those pieces.
Yeah, I mean, these are things that are meant to help everybody.
Create that culture and climate that we're looking for. So if they can't do that, then we're not going to create that culture.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, yeah, I, I'm, so I'm, I'm kind of confused where, where the conversation ended up, I mean, how it's, how it came about.
Because this started in twenty nineteen.
Because it's kind of like we lost, we lost focus of, um, how much work has been put into this, and how much thought has been put, put in this, and how we constantly want to improve. And you even said, everybody said that we need to improve on so many different things.
Well, everybody didn't. There's a lot of things everybody always wants to do, but I, Dominic, well, what I'm trying to get across is that even if you want to improve things and all these things need to happen, we have to look at the bigger picture of not just the things we want to do, but the people that they're affecting.
Well, yeah, I would, I mean, I'm fine with a culture survey looking at that, but I'd, I'd also like to look at, um, not we're losing people, I'd like to see relative, you know, relative to other districts, um, you know, if, to, to quantify some of those types of, um, statements.
And who will spend time to do that during their workday with what they're already doing? So we have to take something off someone's plate to give them that instead.
Then we can't lay that claim if we don't have evidence of that.
Well, I, I actually was in another district, the, the sixth largest district, and it is, I can tell you that our number, retention-wise, our, pre-pandemic, were not great, and I'd be more than happy to do that and show that to you.
Yeah, I'd have to see it from lots of different districts.
Yeah.
Current, so.
Okay. We are, you, you, Dr. Sparland, you have an idea or thoughts about where we're going?
Yes, we do. Faith and Al Gober.
Okay. All right, six point one, board member comments.
Anyone have any board member comments that they'd like to make?
Sure. Um, I had an opportunity to ride the buses first day of school, uh, myself, Dr. Sparland. Um, we drove, was, uh, three, three stops, Hunt Club, Trauber, and Oswego High School. And it was, first of all, we had the best bus driver ever. Uh, Mr. Duncan Armstrong was incredible. Um, so it was just a phenomenal experience just to witness and just to see and all the smiling faces, to interact with all the parents at each bus stop. Uh, we really only got off the bus for all the elementary students. We let the high school and middle school kids get on, but it was just a phenomenal experience to see, um, especially at Hunt Club. It was, it was something magical for me just to watch the kids and the staff and just to, you know, I'm operational by nature, so just watching how it all flowed. And so based on my perspective, of course, and it was very limited, it was only one bus in a, a district of, you know, seventeen thousand, uh, students, but it was just a phenomenal experience just to interact and see all of the smiling faces. So great opportunity, and I look forward to doing it more for the rest of the year.
Anyone else?
Just welcome back.
Yeah, welcome back, and we are very privileged to be able to, um, have an opportunity to govern and make policy for this district. And, um, you know, it's, it is a special thing to see our future and see how they, um, thrive and, and go forward and how, you know, we are excited about what they will do in the future. And so I'm, you know, I'm excited, and so welcome back to our, our students and staff, and we look forward to a great year. And we will formalize something from our board in the coming days.
I just wanted to, um, one of my favorite sayings is putting the unity in community, and I had the opportunity to stop by Panther Fest in the Blue and Silver Bash, and that is literally just a great way to really fill up with pride and see our district in action. So that was, um, fantastic. A lot of, um, times, the board gets emails that are, you know, a little hard to, to swallow, and it's like, we feel like we have a lot in front of us, but there's also some amazing things going on in the community. And I, I don't want to ever, ever forget that we have students that are doing incredible things. And I recently got an email from a parent, um, to tell me that her junior at Oswego High School recently became the newest member of the semi-professional soccer team, the Chicago Strikers. Ethan Tybals is a junior at Oswego High. He is playing for the Strikers, who are in the UPSL division. He is their youngest player by several years, and that he embodies exactly what a student athlete should be consistently, being consistent on the field and off as he is on the high honor roll. So it's always nice to hear those stories that are happening around our community. You know, we have over seventeen thousand kids and students, and, um, I love those success stories and, um, hearing what's going on, um, with our students. And then the final thing I just want to say is to the Transportation Department, um, to Dr. Pesky and Mr. DiArmond, um, the first couple of weeks of school, um, I have butterflies for you. Um, it is overwhelming, and the transparency that you have given the board this year has been absolutely incredible, to see the process that you are going through, to see how you're addressing the calls, many as they come in, and to understand that you are doing the absolute most with the least. Prior to the pandemic, it was very hard to recruit bus drivers. With the pandemic, it's been virtually impossible. And I know how sincerely you take it, the safety of all of our students, and I just want to sincerely congratulate all of you because you're staying up, working through the weekends, staying up all night and so forth, and thank you, um, for everything that you've done. It's, it's incredible.
Yes, here, here. All right, six point two, superintendent's report.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Good evening, board. We're now four days into the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and I've had the opportunity to speak with, uh, many students and staff for the past few days, and I can tell you, there is a very positive energy throughout our schools, and it was very great to see all the, uh, students and staff on the first day, very happy and excited. And I also like to thank all of our administrators, uh, for, for all the good work that they've done in working and prepping for the beginning of the school year. Last week, we referred to the first few days of this, uh, as the significant seventy-two, and we stressed the importance of getting to know our students and building relationships with them. I am proud of the things that I saw happening in our schools, as staff are working to build relations and build a strong foundation for student learning that is so important in the educational process. Um, I, too, last Friday, attended the, uh, OHS Panther Fest and OE Blue and Silver Bash, and I saw a lot of parents and students and staff enjoying the events and all the, you know, all the things that the schools have prepared. And as you said, those are very important nights. Events such as these, they provide school spirit, they create a sense of belonging in schools, they have a, not only a positive effect for now, but it's carried, it's, it's carried throughout the year. So I wanted to definitely highlight on that. Um, I'm, I'm going to now shift my report to an item I feel that needs to be addressed. And as we all know, and we've talked a little bit about tonight, um, about adding an additional parking lot at Oswego East is something that's been discussed by the board over the past few months. Uh, with that said, um, I and the board have received, uh, a handful of inquiries regarding this subject, and I felt it was prudent to speak to this issue in my comments this evening. So one of the emails I received last week, uh, stated, what are we doing with the money that was gifted to the district for the creation of a parking lot at Oswego East? And something I feel that needs clarification is that the money we received by the village was not gifted to us. The money comes from a developer fees that are collected by the village on behalf of the school district and are released to government entities. Um, after reading some of the articles that were written about this subject and the titles of such articles, I could see how one may draw that conclusion. So tonight, as Dr. Pesky mentioned earlier, he's going to, we're going to have an informational report on the tentative budget, and in that, in that, uh, presentation, he will show how the school district receives money from a variety of sources, whether they be state, local, or federal, and are, that are utilized to, uh, run our school district. Earlier this summer, we had a comprehensive facilities plan list, which included tens of millions of dollars in projects that are being done now and for the immediate fu, future. Uh, the additional parking lot at OE has been added to that project list. One issue that is pertinent to this subject matter is, um, exactly what you said, Ms. Johnson, is that we have more capital projects than money. So we are doing our best we can with the dollars we receive to provide the necessities for student learning, and those necessities for student learning have been prioritized in the comprehensive plan. Um, again, that's something I felt that needed to be addressed this evening, and that's my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sparland. Seven point one, consent agenda. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? If no questions, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
You sure can, as soon as I get the right thing in front of me. Okay.
I make a motion to approve all items under consent, including seven point one, minutes of the Board of Education meeting from August eighth, twenty twenty-two, open and closed session.
Second.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Swanson?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Plogar?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Item eight point one is an informational report from Dr. Pesky.
All right, I'm, uh, glad to be joined by our amazing Director of Transportation, Mr. DiArmond, so welcome, Michael.
Thank you.
Uh, today, we'd like to just share with you a, a contract that we're looking at by First Solutions Consulting Routing Services. Uh, First Solutions, in the name, you can see First, uh, First Student, the transportation company that we use for some of our routes. So I'll let, uh, Mr. DiArmond share, um, the impact or the reason for that contract, and we'll be happy to take any questions you've got.
So we're looking at First Routing, or First Consulting Solutions, First Solutions Consulting, um, basically because our router at the time that we had in July was suddenly, promoted to another position within the district and left us kind of shell-shocked that we needed to fill that position. Uh, we're looking at, unfortunately, that's the kind of position that takes some training and takes some knowledge of the data, database that we use, the software that we use. It's not something that's, um, real easy to, uh, train, especially when you already are shorthanded and don't have much time to train. So First Solutions Consulting does this kind of work. They do, do, uh, routing, provide routing solutions. We basically turn over part of the routing software, database to them, give them access. We can give them, you know, tell them things that we need to look for, things they can do. They can do a lot of things in the background that would be otherwise time-consuming for, uh, us in the office. So that's kind of, at this point, that's kind of what we're looking at. We'd like, recommend we do something like that. We would still need somebody in the office to be kind of the liaison, uh, but it would still, like I said, with our short staff situation that we're currently in, it would definitely be a benefit that we could have that and throw, put more onto First, uh, Solutions Consulting for that aspect as far as the, our regular education routing.
I think it's important to point out that the, the contract kind of has three portions. Number one is they're actually creating our route. So imagine all of the students in all the houses and all the schools they go to, uh, all of those puzzle pieces, and they look at those routes and the traffic through Versatrans, which is our routing software, and they create efficient routes. Our drivers go out and they drive those routes and give feedback to the routing folks, who then make changes based on the driver's experience. So First Solutions Consulting is creating, then all year long, they will maintain. As new students move in, as students change, uh, transportation needs change, they will, uh, address that. But also what we built into the contract is the ability to train. So when we hire our, uh, our router, they can pass that experience, that knowledge on to the person that we have take on that position. So this is not a contract we're looking to have in perpetuity. We're going to have a person who will take that responsibility again, but to create, maintain, and train is really the focus of this, uh, relationship. So Mike and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So this is a cost we're incurring because of employee turnover, creating positions that created internal promotions?
Is this, uh, I know we had spoken about potentially a, um, technology solution. Is this completely separate from that?
Yes.
And would that solution help this issue?
Not soon enough?
Not particularly, yeah.
So, because I don't want to spend the forty thousand of this money twice.
No, no.
Okay.
You wouldn't be doing that.
Okay.
The solution you're referring to is Tyler Drive, where a student would get on the bus, and with an ID card, we would know they're on the bus, and then we would know when they checked off the bus and things of that nature. So if there were a crisis or an accident, we would know what students got on the bus. We would know where the accident happened and what students exited the bus, and only a message would go to the students and families that were on the bus at the time, not students who got off the bus. So it's a, it's a really neat, I mean, it's, I'm kind of summarizing it, paraphrasing it, not giving it justice, but it does a lot.
Yeah, it's a Cadillac, right? Is it, and Tyler's Drive, that's something that costs like several hundred thousand dollars, right?
Uh, I think the most recent, um, quote that they gave me was about the three fifty to four hundred thousand dollar range.
But, but that's just to implement.
And not to say that you don't deserve it.
That was just to implement, that's not necessarily the ongoing cost.
Yeah, there, there is an annual fee for that.
Yeah.
Dr. Pesky, is, uh, so is this a true statement? This is a reallocation of funds that have already been budgeted for a salary for a person that we do not have here? And it's a temporary solution? As, once we get through that process, get to that person, this group, this, they'll help and to train, make sure the person's properly trained to take over these responsibilities for the future, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Forgive me for, for essence, maybe it's in there. Maintains it as an hourly rate, but we're expecting the, it to cost around forty thousand? Or is it forty thousand that we're giving?
The hourly rate is if we exceed, I think, that, part of the, uh, the scope of work is that they would provide about eighty hours' worth of, um, basically cleanup work, I guess, to help us go into our system and make it work more efficiently, help, you know, over, uh, I don't know how many years we've had Versatrans and, and been using it, but, you know, junk builds up, and, and it doesn't get cleaned out well.
Yeah.
Our intent is to use that eighty hours that they've allocated that to help clean up the junk in there, that, to, to make future routing easier, you know, so that you, you don't have some of these crazy stops that, what is this kid every year get put here, and we can't figure out why it's there, and, and, but he belongs over here, you know, that kind of thing. So, some of that stuff that we need, need to clean up, that would, like I say, we'll make, once we get, get a full-time router back in place, it'll make their job easier, more efficient, uh, and make it better overhaul for the communities as a whole.
They think eighty hours is going to be enough?
It's a good start, and, and that's where the, the rate came in. I think there was a hundred and fifty dollar, uh, an hour rate that we exceeded that.
Right, well, saying it's. Giving me a price and then saying, oh, by the way, that's only eighty hours, and then plus it's a hundred and fifty bucks an hour, it's going to add up real quick.
Yeah, that's why it helps. I've done these projects before where we clean up student information systems. I've done these projects before where we clean up student information systems or finance systems, and now it's just taking that work to a transportation system. But we're talking hundreds of thousands of records over the years, and they do have a, they do have a sweeping program that'll go in and do a lot of this automated, and then they just need to go in and change a little bit. So, it's a, it's a fun process.
Okay, so my next question is, if this is for information tonight, and we don't vote on it again for two more weeks, the impact of this decision really isn't coming for, like, a month?
Yeah. Mike and I had some creative accounting on that one. We're actually paying the vendor on an hourly rate right now before the official contract is in place, because we needed this. They've actually created our routes and are working on the scheduling, and we've already seen some benefits to what they've been doing. So, the contract is from when we sign it till the end of the year, and then, like I said, right now, we're kind of paying them like a vendor on an hourly rate.
Okay.
Till the contract is approved. If it's not approved, then Mike and I will go to Plan B after crying for the.
So, would you have seen?
Just to continue to pay the hourly rate for the contract that we didn't approve? So, really, we're going to pay it either way?
Well, the, the hourly rate is actually part of the contract is, if you approve the contract, that hourly rate will actually roll into the total. So, 32,000 for this year, any hourly approved will roll into that 32,000.
But you've seen a benefit so far.
And it, it was, it's like Dr. Sparland said, it is budgeted, and so we did budget for this in both the professional services and through payroll. So, it's either through payroll and hiring someone, which we have not done yet, because we're allowing the professional services to do the database cleanup and creation of the route. So, it's, it's a little trade-off there.
And the salary, salary for the previous router was well, well above 32,000.
Yeah.
And just to clarify, we do not have money for Tyler Drive.
I think you did mention to Mr. DeArmond, you needed to write a lot of grants for that.
Yeah, I said, yeah, we can find some grant money for it.
Yeah, find me some grant money. I can spend it.
One question, I'm sorry. In the top paragraph, it describes the, where did I see it? As described, like fifth sentence down, fully described in the statement of work, but I don't see the statement of work. Is that separate, or am I just scanning too fast?
I didn't, I didn't either.
So, there are two documents, I'm not sure which, do you have the terms and conditions? Or do you have the scope of work?
I don't see the scope of work. That's what I was, because I don't see it.
On the computer, we're looking at the statement of work as opposed to the, so the scope.
Can you upload it for us?
I only see one document.
Yeah, I only see one document, because this document also doesn't have the, the cost outlined.
Right. That's why I was, maybe, that's why, maybe I missed it.
We just have general terms and conditions.
Yeah, I have general terms and conditions, that's it.
We'll, we'll upload the statement of work for you.
All right, perfect. That'll help me to, that'll probably answer a lot of my questions.
Any other questions from the board on this informational report for item 8.1?
All right, Mr. DeArmond, again, thank you for the hours that you've been putting into transportation. We know it's been, it's been rough, but the efforts of you, your team, and everyone else is greatly appreciated. So, thank you.
Yes.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Pesky, are you ready for item 8.2?
Ready.
It's an information report in regards to FY '23 tentative budget.
So, I was here a year ago. I'm glad to be back to talk about our tentative budget and the situation that we're in now. And also, a lot of this is, I realize we have some new board members at the table, but we also have a community who's very interested in our financial situation. So, a lot of this is also some educational slides. So, this is the, as you can see here, this is the tentative budget for what, what finance people call the FY or Funding Year '23. It is the School Year '22-'23, so I think that's an important demarker to point out. I also want to point out that I had a tremendous amount of help on this, a lot of eyes on the budget and on the planning, and a huge help from Debbie Smith, who's our bookkeeper in the district, who's been doing this for about 28 years, and Amanda Sitar, who's our brand-new hired Director of Finance. She's done a phenomenal job interpreting and incorporating what she knew into what our situation is, and of course, Teri Gochi, who is just really been tremendously helpful in coordinating and communicating a lot of our budget needs. So, I've got a lot of resources behind me in the Finance Department. So, one of those educational slides that to point out, the purpose of the budget, number one, it's required by the Illinois School Code. We have to adopt a budget. If we don't adopt a budget, then item two is a problem. The budget is what gives us the taxing authority and the authority to expend dollars. Without an adopted budget, we can't, we can't tax, and we can't spend money according to our plan. But more importantly, I think the budget serves as a financial plan, and as you see here, it serves for our departments, our building, and our district. And kind of to complement the conversation that we are having today, it's a plan for our priorities, our initiatives, the Envision 308. As Mr. Plogar was pointing out, that there, there is a, there is a financial component to a lot of the initiatives, and we work with our departments, our buildings, and our district to make sure that we, we can afford those priorities. It's also used as a very key management and communication tool for our community, letting them know where our priorities are and what our positions are. There's a, let's see. Sorry, there we go. Budget requirements, a couple of things that have to happen. Number one is we need to have a final budget. The final budget needs to be adopted through board action by the end of the first quarter of the district's fiscal year. Our fiscal year begins July 1, and it ends June 30, which is a lot different than other, like municipalities who begin in January and end in December. We actually begin in July 1. So, the end of our first quarter is actually September 30. So, September 30 is when the board needs to have adopted the final budget, or adopted a tentative budget and made it final. Before we adopt the final budget, though, there's a process we have to go through. One of those processes is we need to, we need to put the budget on public display. So, the budget needs to be available for the public 30 days after we put a notice in the newspaper, and we're now scheduled, actually, I thought it was going to be August 26, but Teri just told me she could get it in the paper on August 23. So, August 23, is that tomorrow? That's tomorrow already. We will have a notice in the paper. The community can come either here to the district office, where I'll have a budget on file, or they can come to my office in the Finance Department on 71 Stone Hill Drive, or they can look at it online. I'll have it on the website as a tentative budget for them to view as well. Then, the, once the budget is adopted, then, and so we, we do our public display, and then in September, the last board meeting in September, we adopt a budget. We then have a few things that we have to do. File it with the county clerk within 30 days of adoption. We need to also submit the official ISBE budget form within 30 days to the Illinois State Board of Education. We need to post the final budget on the website. We also need to send a copy to our Regional Office of Education. So, there's a calendar. Today, August 22, I kind of mixed these up a little bit. We'll do the middle bullet point. The Board of Education is going to get a chance to see a high-level review of the FY '23 tentative budget. Then, for action today, we'll call to have an action item for a resolution calling for a public hearing on the FY '23 tentative budget, and that will happen at the last meeting in September. At our regularly scheduled board meeting, we will call, we'll have a hearing on the tentative budget to see if anyone in the public over that 30 days has any questions, observations, or just comments about the budget. Then, we close that hearing, and then, based on that feedback and what I hear in my office for the next 30 days, we, we come to the board with a tentative budget to be voted on and adopted as the final budget. And that's on September 26, so there, we have 33 days. Actually, that's if I use the August 26 date, so since we're actually putting the notice in the paper on the 23rd, that'll give us 36 days that will have been in the public domain to review. So, we'll have that public hearing on September 26, and then we'll ask the board to adopt a final budget for the FY '23 school year. So, with that said, I'll, I'll kind of jump right into some of the budget impacts. This is very similar to the presentation that I did last year, just pointing out some revenue highlights. Local revenues, we look at property taxes. We look at corporate personal property replacement tax. We've got some interest earnings. We've got registration, tuition, course fees, athletic fees, and we also have some local revenues realized from facility rentals and, and from some of the E-rate initiatives that we have going on. In addition to local revenue, we also have state revenue. Our evidence-based funding, which took place of a couple of years ago, was called General State Aid. So, we've got our evidence state funding and also our, our mandatory categorical grants, things like our transportation reimbursement, our early childhood block grants, some special education reimbursement, tuition reimbursement, driver education reimbursements. That's all realized at a state level. And we also have some federal revenue that we realize. We were, we're now going back to the National School Lunch Program. For the last two years with the pandemic, we've been in a, lunch has been free to everyone. It's been an extension of the seamless summer option for funding lunches, and we're actually now back, and we communicated that with parents, we're now back to the National School Lunch Program, where the only free lunches are for parents who apply for the free reduced lunch applications. So, we're going back to selling more à la carte and selling lunches in the cafeteries and whatnot. Other federal revenue is realized through our Title I, II, III, and IV grants. Our IDEA Special Education Grants, that's both reg, Special Education and also our pre-K Special Education Grants. We get some dollars from Medicaid, and we also still have some revenue from the federal government in terms of the ESAR pandemic dollars as well. I know that Heather would be very excited to talk with you about Title and ESAR grants. She oversees and coordinates a lot of those grants, writing them, coordinating them, and does a really great job with the grants. So, then we turn a little bit to our expenditures. So, obviously, as a school district, a lot of our expenditures are in the first two bullet points. About 82% of our budget is salaries and benefits. Benefits, when we talk about those, we're talking about, you know, retirement, like TRS and IMRF, but we're also talking about medical, dental, and vision benefits as well. We then go into purchase services. What are the supplies that we need to buy to operate? Curriculum supplies and other purchase services. And then we've got office supplies, curriculum supplies. We've got some capital outlay. We do have some tuition costs, transportation, food service, private placement. We've got our operations and maintenance, things like our utilities, natural gas, sanitation, phone, water, internet, some lease payments, computers, Chromebooks, we leased this year, or last year with COVID. We also have a large bus lease payment for all the buses we have, and then a lot of our capital projects. So, those are kind of some high-level things that we spend our dollars on. And of course, for me, it's always that balance between revenue and expenditures. So, evidence-based funding is going to take years to fully fund. Oswego Community School District 308 receives about 60% of our adequacy target from evidence-based funding. We have a heavily reliance in our school district on residential property. 71% of our equalized assessed value or our properties are residential, as opposed to commercial properties or maybe farmland, which is a little bit higher than surrounding districts. We had a really good conversation at Cabinet the other day about this, and we were able to clarify, when you read residential, and I highlighted and bolded that there, when I say residential property in EAV, I don't mean local property tax. I actually mean, out of all of our local property tax dollars that we collect, a lot of those dollars are collected through residential properties. So, and you can kind of see here, then, you know, we are a tax cap district, so our, translates to our revenue is capped at CPI or 5%. In 25 years, I've never seen the CPI go up to or over 5% since that law's been passed, and this will be the first year that we actually see a 7% CPI. So, that's where the cap will come into play. We will not increase our revenue next year by 7%. We're capped at 5%. So, some of the rising costs that our districts, district needs to balance revenues and expenditures for are, obviously, if 82% of our budget is salary and benefits, looking at those annual increases in collective bargaining agreements, if you have a 7% raise, but you only raise your revenue 2%, well, you got to make that up somewhere.
Can I ask a question about this slide real quick? Is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I just have two questions about this slide. One, do you know what our adequacy target has? I know you have, it's going to take years for it to fully fund. Do we know how much progress we've made on our adequacy target over the years, number one, would be my first question. The second question is, it's a 10, isn't this a 10-year piece? Like, the bill, the legislation originally was 10 years. I know they flaunt, or, you know, they, they celebrate every year, hey, we've added, I think it's like somewhere around 300 and some million dollars. But that's actually, if people read the, the law, it's actually close to the minimum that they have to actually write. And I don't know if anyone knows this, so if you don't know, or if you don't know, I, I don't, but I'm curious, what happens when that 10 years is up? Are they supposed to continue to fund that? Because I don't think people understand how much EBF is really helping us.
Yeah.
And, you know, so I, I wanted to, I apologize for interrupting, but if you could address that, or if you, if anyone knows that.
That's actually three questions, Jared. You said only two.
I apologize.
So, I'll answer, okay, I'll answer all three of them.
Yeah, thank you.
So, so the first question, I would say, how much progress have we made on our adequacy targets? That's really a function of formulas. What I, I'd like to share with the board maybe in another Friday update, is what some of those 34, 34 qualifiers are, and evidence-based funding has only been around since about 2018. So, we'd have to take a look at where we were, what our, what our initial targets were and the data we had, and then, and I can do that.
And if you don't know, don't worry. I, like, I'm not trying to, oh, I got you, this question, so if you don't know, no worries.
We started at, we started at 61%, and in three years, we're now up to 66%.
Yeah.
And I could follow up on that by saying, you're absolutely right, that there's no appropriations expected to meet the full funding in the 10-year period. Your district was a, one of the plaintiffs in the Cahokia lawsuit against the state, and that case unfortunately was dismissed just this last year. You know, the, the argument was, we now have a standard. We have an EBF adequate target for funding, so please force the General Assembly to fund it for our school districts, and the court said no.
I appreciate you bringing that up, Maureen, because that's something that this board did in, in an effort to ensure that we reached the adequacy target prior, within that 10 years. Because we've, it's become, you know, EBF is fully funded, I put the air quotes up on purpose, at 350 million dollars, but we all know, 350 million additional dollars each year is not close to enough, is not even probably half enough, to get to full, at all the school districts, there are tier ones such as ourself, to 90%, the 90% target within 10 years.
But what, what has happened to the narrative is people have now started to say, well, you are fully funded, and we're not. We're getting our adequacy target, but that is not fully funded. I literally was in a conversation with, and I copied Mrs. Simleton and Dr. Sparland on everybody saying, you have enough money, make it work, and this is what the community believes, that we are fully funded. Yes, we are getting our 66%. That is true, but we are not at 100%, and we're pretty far from it. So, it is helping. I mean, we're grateful to have it, like, I don't- Like I don't, but we're not fully funded. I just think that's really important.
And I'm curious, I don't know if you can answer that question. What, what happens when that, because it's a ten-year, ten-year piece, I'm curious what happens when the legislation runs out, because they're not going to make it. They're not going to, there's no way, because you need, I mean, at the beginning, you needed seven hundred and forty million, and they've been short every year.
Right.
I don't know if anyone knows the answer to that.
And unfortunately, again, this case went up to, you know, the Illinois Supreme Court, and they turned it down. At the moment, anyway, they rejected the arguments that there needs to be full funding, full funding to get everyone up to a hundred percent in the ten years, and recognizing that at this rate, that is not going to happen, far from it.
So if we're kind of having this discussion partially because we want to inform the community, what is adequacy? What is this, what does this mean?
That's those thirty-four different, and I'll share those with you. I actually have those, and I started to present them at the Finance Committee.
What is sixty-six percent? What is that number?
Oh, what does that equate to in terms of dollars?
Yeah. So like, how short are we?
Per pupil.
Yeah. You know what, I can, I can get back to you on that, on what that, what that equates to. So I wasn't prepared for that this evening, but definitely part of our conversation.
And then, so I guess, and defining what adequacy means, basically, we're saying that relative to a hundred percent, we're at sixty-six percent of what we should have as a district.
We're sixty-six percent funded based on the needs that have been identified, the student population, the student needs, the programs, the teacher, the staffing levels, all the things that make up their, what do they call it? Their prototypical school, you know, an elementary is at four fifty and it's staffed this way. Middle school is, is this large and staffed this way, but with these student needs. So all of that is kind of plugged into the formula, and I can share that with you.
And it takes into consideration things like your EL population, your sped population, your free and reduced lunch population, transportation needs, all those things are factored in.
I thank you very much.
But that's just some.
I really appreciate the clarification. This was a perfect time to have it. Don't wait till the presentation's done. That was very poignant. I know that we have another board member sitting at the table who's on the Finance Team with me, and we talk about this all the time. It's what is, wait, because the state has, what is our base funding and hold harmless? We are fully funded at our base funding, but we're supposed to be increasing our funding every year, but that increase in funding is not a guarantee. What is only guaranteed is the base funding, what we got last year.
Which is why I ask for five-year projections based on zero increase in that hold harmless that we've seen from you once in a while.
Just to prepare.
We, well, we need to know, because if, if we're sending the narrative out that we're fully funded, and fully funded is a, is a prorated, if you will, amount of the actual adequacy target.
Well, and, and we're getting close to the end of the legislation. The five-year projection is getting close to the end of the legislation.
But.
And to Lori's point, that, that extra percent, like we, you know, we get a certain amount, that extra amount in evidence-based funding, based on the three hundred and fifty million for our district, equated to about four million dollars. So Lori's concern is if we don't get those extra dollars, what do we do with the four million dollars?
Dr. Patsky, with all due respect, that's not my concern. My concern is that we're not planning anything except to get an increase. We, it is far more reasonable at this point to be planning to get zero increase in EBF funding each year, because the narrative is already happening that this is fully funded, which means that there is an intentional effort to make sure that community is understand that sixty-six percent is what fully funded means, and we are planning something very different than that. So if our plans are not meeting the narrative that is actually happening, we have a problem if we're not taking into account that it needs to be at zero when we plan, even if we know it should be more.
Good. Thank you for that. Based on our conversation at the Cabinet level about residential versus local, state, and federal revenue, to separate those a little bit, Dr. Sparland suggests that we take a look at the Illinois School Report Card. Now, this is data that's kind of in the rears, so currently, if you go to the Illinois State Report Card, you're going to see data from 2020. But to kind of share a success story, if you look, our chart is in the upper left, and you can see that at local, state, and federal revenue, we are looking at about sixty-one percent funded by the local communities, property taxes, local sources. We're funded about thirty-five percent at the state and about three-point-eight percent at the federal level. So now, if you look at that compared to the state of Illinois, we're actually doing a little bit better. Other, the average resident school district in the state of Illinois is actually paying sixty-six percent funded by the local property taxes. We are sixty-one percent. State funding, they are funded at twenty-seven percent. We are funded at thirty-five. And then at the federal level, they're funded at seven-point-one, and we're about three-point-eight. So that's kind of a, you know, to show where we compare to the state, state percentage.
But that also means we're more reliant on state funding.
I don't know if we're doing better necessarily, because I think a lot of our constituents in the community, I would probably raise my hand, would say, okay, enough taxes. Like it, what this chart for me is representative of is where people prioritize public education.
Right.
And our community is prioritizing it more than other communities are. But I don't know that it's necessarily that we're doing better.
No, this isn't, no, I don't look at this as any sort of qualitative ranking.
Right.
No, not at all. It just shows where our revenue is based on the average state of Illinois.
Right.
Can I?
I would, I would argue that it shows that we should probably pay attention to state elections and ask people what is going on with funding of education. And there's some elections coming up in November, so people should probably ask everybody who's running for state.
What's your stance on education?
Offices, hey, what, how, where are you at when it comes to education?
And be prepared for the answer, that it might be there are a lot of things we need to spend money on.
With the, just, just going back to the community, so the sixty-one percent is coming from local funds, whereas, you know, most of the average is sixty-six percent coming from local funds. But within that sixty-one percent, seventy-one percent of that is coming from residents.
Residential.
Whereas many of those other Illinois school district averages is much lower. So that's part of what's driving, you know, the taxes is, is because much of our local tax needs is coming from residents, whereas for a lot of the other districts in the state, they're deriving it more from businesses, commercial, all those types.
And this doesn't take into account the debt service.
Yeah, I was actually going to ask that later, because I was very interested in getting that, because that's literally twenty-five percent of your tax bill once, you know, which is a huge part.
But at the same time, can I, it is nine oh five, and I think we have a lot. Can I just ask if we want to continue the conversation or let him finish his presentation first and have more of that?
Good conversation, though. I appreciate the feedback, everyone. So just to remind the board, we have nine different funds, but I refer to operational budget because it's where we do most of our spending. For instance, we've got nine total funds in the district. Five of those are referred to as operating. As you see on the left, I've got the Education Fund, which is salaries, benefits, curriculum supplies and materials, professional services. Then there's Fund Twenty, which is building engineers and custodial and operation maintenance salaries, and then their supplies and materials and professional services. Transportation, guess what? Salaries, benefits, leases, and supplies and materials. Then we've got our IMRF, Social Security, and our working cash. So our operating funds are really those five accounts. The other four is our debt service, which I talk about more when we do the levy. Our capital projects, which we'll talk a lot more this year because of our debt service extension bonds, that those dollars are going into capital projects for spending. And we don't really do much with the tort. We actually put our liability in education and operations. And then health, life, safety, we again put in operations. So that's, so really, our operating funds are almost all of our, all of our budget except our debt service, and now that we've got some debt service extension bonds, some of those dollars. So now for the actual tentative budget, and here's what it amounts to. As you can see, our local property taxes and other local revenue amount, accounts to about a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars in estimated revenue, which is about fifty-three percent of our total revenues from the operational dollars. So right this year, we're scheduled to receive about two hundred and thirty-one million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. The state funding portion of that and other state revenue is about ninety-five million dollars, and the federal portion of that revenue will be fourteen million. So you can see those percentages. In addition to looking at the revenue that way, I also like to take a look at the revenue if we look at our operating funds. So here they are, education with our salaries and benefits, it's about a hundred and ninety-four million dollars in levies and local revenue for the education revenue. In our operation and maintenance fund for salaries, benefits, supplies, and projects, it's about twenty million dollars. Transportation is about nine million dollars, and that, that also includes the state reimbursement. So that's not just the levy. Matter of fact, eighty percent of that is the reimbursements we get. And then our IMRF and Social Security is about seven million dollars, and we only levy about a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in working cash after we allocate to the education, operation, maintenance, transportation, and IMRF funds. So that's kind of a breakdown of our revenue. The key number there is about two hundred and thirty-one million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in, in revenue. And the next slide is our expenditures. There we go. So our expenditures, you can see here, based on fund. Yeah, that's right. Our Education Fund, our expenditures this year are about a hundred and ninety-one million, salaries, benefits, materials, supplies, professional services. Operations and maintenance, we're budgeted for about eighteen million, six hundred thousand dollars. Salaries, benefits, supplies, materials, projects. Transportation, we're budgeted for about fourteen million dollars. IMRF, Social Security, we're budgeted for about six-point-three million. So our total expenditures are two hundred and thirty, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And then if we also look at that by objects, if you want to see, I've provided for the board the same, now broken up on like salaries, but that's all from Fund Ten. All teachers, parapros, anyone in the educational circles. Then we've also got in there salaries for operations and maintenance. They're all, all of the funds are in there. So all salaries for our district is a hundred and fifty-four million. Our benefits are about thirty-two million. We do about twenty million dollars worth of professional services. We do ten million dollars in supplies, about a hundred and fifty-six thousand in capitalized expenses. Other objects are about nine million dollars and some non-capital expenditures, which is kind of that window between five hundred dollars and more, but less than five thousand dollars. That's about three million dollars. So our difference between revenue and expenditures is that two thirty-one, where'd it go? Two hundred and thirty-one million dollars to about two hundred and thirty. So we're about seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars in a surplus budget this year based on revenues and expenditures.
Can we see a comparison from last year to this year, or the last couple of years?
Yeah, one of the things that I'm working on is for the, we're working on that year-over-year, so we'll show that to you as well as a budget at a glance. But I do have, for the website, I will have the ISBE, the Illinois State Board of Education Budget Form, that will show a lot of those numbers in a lot more detail, and that'll, that'll be what's on public display.
But it will still be just for fiscal year twenty-three, not for previous?
Correct, for just this year. And then I'll give you that year-over-year analysis. And that is the end of the tentative budget. I appreciate the questions and the time, and wonder if there's any more that we might want to discuss.
So I'm looking at this, looking at the budget, we brought up our Envision 308. Though we're not anywhere near where we need to go for the twenty percent. So I understand what the narrative is out there in the, in the community. I understand there's a lot of misinformation. There's, the conversations aren't in-depth enough. Unfortunately, there's a lot of times the desire to oversimplify this. So fine, I'll, turnabout's fair play. So basically, if one, if we're going to come together as a board and we're going to decide, hey, we're not going to levy, we should come with a list of cuts. So we shouldn't come up here and just say, we're not going to levy, let's not oversimplify this. We should come together with a list of cuts, if that's what we're going to do. Because I'm assuming this is based off of a levy. Is that correct?
The revenues are based off of the levy that we filed and what we, what we filed for and expect to see in terms of an extension.
Okay, so it's impossible for us to have, we're lying somewhere, right? So you can't have Envision 308, so either that's the lie, either the budget's the lie, or you're telling people, hey, we're going to somehow, not you, not you, just so we're clear, I'm talking about us, the board. Or we're going to tell them, no, we're not going to levy, but somehow we're going to magically move on this, this school bus and not make cuts. So if we as a board are going to come and make, I'm just saying, I'm just preempting us. If we're going to show up, and I'm not saying any of us are, I don't know what you're going to do, but if we're going to show up and not levy, then we might as well come here with a list of cuts. Either that, or we should change Envision 308.
Which is the reason, Dr. Patsky, also, that I've been asking you for these five-year projections to include what it would look like with a zero increase in EBF and that zero percent increase in the tax levy.
And we've prevented that, we've presented that to the board on three different occasions, but I'll be happy to bring those or update those and bring those back. So I, and just Jared, to your point, I think what I really like about this last slide is it really speaks to the point that you bring up. A lot of people feel that the district has a very large budget. We're a people-oriented organization. A lot of our budget is in people and salaries. That's what makes this district great, the teachers, the classroom, the initiatives that they have going. And what this points out is, including all of the purchase services and supplies, if you look at that thirty million dollars for eighteen thousand kids, for all the curriculum renewal, all of the curricular goals, all the SCL, all of the initiatives that we have fit in that thirty million dollars, because the rest of our budget is salaries and facilities and, and transportation and food service. And so when you look at the budget of the district, the actual operational that the Educational Service Department has to operate on, it's in the professional or purchase services and supplies. So you know, that, that's a nice number for the community to look at.
And that, that's only a portion of that.
And it's only a portion of that, correct?
So yeah, so that's, that's what, fourteen percent of the overall budget, and then only a portion of that fourteen percent is kind of for which we're referring to.
Yeah.
So I'm assuming it's not a very big portion either. Well, thirty out of two hundred and thirty-nine, yeah.
Do we know, you mean, I don't know, my, my brain is, I'm nervous to ask this question out loud now. Because my, my, my brain's gone. But my question was, based on the fact that the largest portion of our budget is for staff, do we know the staff to teach, staff to student ratio?
Yeah, we do. That's on the Illinois School Report Card. The only thing is, we are going to, we are going to do a position control where we have a little bit more detailed information about the, the real, the real student ratio. For instance, we have, in the central office, we have some teachers who do professional development for teachers. Well, they look at those adults and they also say, well, let's count them in the total numbers, but they don't really supervise immediately kids, but they are professionals, and it impacts our ratio. So even the Illinois State Report Card, our numbers look different than they would otherwise. But that's, that's a really good question, and we'll answer that for you guys at about this time next year, maybe soon.
This time next year. Okay.
So, oh.
No, I'm, 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 well.
No, go ahead, and I'll.
It's a deeper question, but I'll, I'll pause. I mean, because it doesn't matter right now, but it's fine, go ahead.
So you said eighty-two percent of our budget is salaries and benefits? So when I think about, what is the average percentage for any school district in terms of their salary and benefits? Like, do we, do we know?
It's, it's about, it's about that eighty-two to eighty-five percent is the numbers.
So it is for any other school district, too?
For any business in general.
The, and the one thing, if you. The, and the one thing, if you look, like our numbers are actually a little bit lower because we also have in that purchase services are some contracts where we would like to have employees, but because we're not hiring some of those staffing, we need to get that need met through a contract from professional services. Mike, uh, Mike's example was perfect. We could hire a router to do that job, but we're gonna hire a company to clean it up and do that. So that, that is, that dollar amount is actually in purchase services, not in the salary. So we're at about eighty-one percent in, uh, in staffing where we, you know, we're, we're looking at that eighty-two, eighty-five as a typical different district staffing level.
Thank you.
And the, the other part of that though, that I have been struggling with is, so two-thirds is like a roundabout number for any type of business, right? We also have staff that are highly educated. And so you would expect that number to even be towards the higher end of it. But compared to other districts, on the average, we're lower. So I think that's incredibly important. But to your point, Latonya and to Dr. Petzke and Dr. Sparland, this is why we have been asking, you said you were working on position control, we would like a strategic organizational plan. It is vital to our finance, our budget because it is the biggest line item on our budget. So we, I mean, we've asked for the very basics and we still haven't gotten it. So we gotta start with a, a, a very, um, um, comprehensive org chart. But we have got to get better at, um, having an organization, a strategic organizational plan.
And I'm sorry, when are we, when are we getting the five-year plan? Did we say when we were gonna get the five-year projection?
Between now and the levy, I'll be presenting again. So I believe on the Envision three oh eight, I have some time in October. I'll take a look at where that is again. But I can provide that, uh, to the board, um, as well through Dr. Sparland.
I would like to see that, if we're looking at the budget and we're, we're gonna be voting on a budget, I kinda wanna see what this budget does to our five-year plan before I approve that.
This is, this budget is, is in line with the five-year projections we had last year. So when we presented those to the board, um, I can give you a fourth time, I can give you those data and show it to you.
Not the fourth time, Dr. Petzke, because every time you've presented them, they've changed pretty dramatically in terms of downward trending. The first time you presented them, we were about, in five years, estimated to have about seventy million-ish in reserves. And that's scaled down throughout time, so please don't minimize that request.
Yeah, no, not at all, Lori, I am. I think where you see the minimize though is when, when we do the, the, the regular base projection and then we, we, when we say no EBF and then when we say no levy.
No, that's not where the minimized has been with all, like, I, I don't wanna continue the conversation. I think there are a few people here that are clear on what it is that we're asking for so we can make sure that you get more clarification on that offline.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, we're gonna keep you up here for one more, one more, uh, information item, Dr. Petzke. So discussion of vendor contracts, this item eight point three.
All right, as asked, here we go. Um, I put together a list, uh, the vendor, vendors and contracts are something that we provide in our audit every year. So I've been able to go back in the last five years of audits and take a look at what we've presented for, um, vendors and contracts over twenty-five thousand dollars that we publish through our audit. Um, and the Board of Education has asked me if, if we were to look at what the vendors and contract list look like if we went down to about fifteen thousand dollars. So I provided that, um, and, uh, as we begin working with our auditors this year, one of the things that the business office does is it continues to solicit and find out what contracts are we entering into. Um, we do have some policies about entering into contracts that involve the Board of Education and making sure that all of those contracts are housed within the business office. For instance, Mr. DeArmond today coming with the contract for First Solutions. I would expect to have a copy of that contract reviewed by the attorney. It's a brand-new contract, we've never engaged in it before. And then I would keep that contract and file in the business office and keep a list of when we entered it, what the timeline is, is it for one year, two years, three years? Does it have a built-in annual renewal? And then more importantly is, are we doing our due diligence to make sure that, um, we don't have contract creep? You know, we, we continue to pay contracts and, oh, it's five percent this year and five percent next year if we go out to bid and make sure we're getting a, a good deal for the services we're provided. So we watch that list quite a bit. I have a lot of partners who help me with that. Um, as you see on the list I provided for the board, I've broken the contracts down by the departments who initiate those, whether it be the superintendent's office with attorneys or if it's the finance office with financial, um, uh, service providers, educational services, HR resources, student services. And, uh, you can see in that list, right now, we have it broken down. I've shared that with the, I've shared that list with all of our, uh, directors and executive directors. And I've asked them to, you know, said in the business office in our past audits, these are the contracts we have. Please add to this list, what else do you have that's fifteen thousand or more, twenty-five thousand or more? Is it a vendor that we pay or is it a contract? So, um, I was, uh, happy to put that together and present that for information for the board.
I have one question. How, how does the district decide if a company is a vendor or a contractor?
Yep, um, it depends on the relationship and, uh, if it's just a short-term relationship and we need a short-term need taken care of versus, uh, putting together more of a contractual relationship and, and actually having some more terms and, uh, and whatnot behind that relationship. So, for instance, a vendor could be OfficeMax. We don't have a contract with OfficeMax, we just need office supplies. And OfficeMax has the cheapest paper. So we went out to bid and rather than doing a contract with OfficeMax, we just pay them for their supplies, materials or services. But if we, you know, uh, if we were to do that in, in other areas, we, it might make more sense to have a contract for terms and, uh, terms, uh, for them to follow up on. I'm sure Maureen's probably biting her tongue, she probably like, oh, like, she could talk all day about vendors and contracts too, so. She, uh, she does a great job. We, uh, have been giving her a lot of our initial contracts to look at, review and make sure that it's in, uh, the board's best interest, the terms and, uh, and things that we have in our current contracts.
I would like to challenge, um, my cohorts on the Board of Education that we have some sort of policy in place, um, that includes a direction to, um, the financial department, that we have a vendor questionnaire. That vendor questionnaire is typically a series of questions that is used to help in evaluating and assessing risk with any vendors we might do business with. And most importantly, it ensures third-party due diligence and fidelity in, uh, procuring services or products. Within that, um, policy, I would really like to see a vendor review where we are looking at contracts on a regular basis. So that when we have a service that we've used or a product and we've had twelve years, fifteen years, twenty years of a relationship, but we haven't gone to bid on those relationships to make sure that we're getting the best bang for our buck. I really think it's important, I think it's a vital part of what the board should do at the governance and, uh, financial fidelity level, fiduciary responsibility, if you will. So I, I think we need to look at putting a policy into place.
I'd like to add on to that. I, I appreciate, Dr. Sparland, you having Dr. Petzke correct the contact. Contract and vendor, this says contacts FY twenty-one, uh, to include the transaction totals for the board. But I, I think that we need to have a policy in place to make these numbers public too.
Yep.
To be honest with you, I, I don't see why we would not include those numbers for our community. Um, I don't know if we have a policy not encouraging us to do that, but I'd like to add that into this if we.
I actually tried to work it through our policy committee and it kind of stalled, so I needed it.
Cause it's the money, it's, yeah, yeah.
And we do, in the, in the audit.
Well, and it was also, you know, it was also, there was a part of it in policy committee where if we didn't agree with their political stance on something, we weren't gonna use them, that I think is where we. That's where we stalled in committee, I think, part of it.
I, I think that I'm looking at the names of companies, that's, that's all I care about and.
Correct.
What services they provide, so.
And we do.
I, I just wanna share with the community what we spend on these services. It's, it's interesting, especially if we're trying to educate about finance, to know that we spend over a million dollars on heating and piping or that we spend twenty-three thousand in scientific supplies and things like that. The, Herve Jones, for Graduation, every year, this ends up on our list. It's, it's good for our community to have this information so that they can kind of get a sense of scope and scale when we're talking about what these dollars mean.
But also for not only us as board members, but for the board members upcoming. When we get presented with contracts and are asked to approve them.
Right.
We have no context as to where this vendor came from, why we're using this vendor, how much we've spent with this vendor, why, when they were last reviewed, when this last went to bid. And we continue to approve contracts without any of that context, so.
And I don't even know that we can make a policy for that, cause it's so procedural sometimes. But we can have that policy and we can have it in on contracts over a dollar amount.
Correct.
We'll have a big process of it.
We don't care, if it's six hundred dollars, that's not what we're asking about.
But I, I think, I, I agree with everything that's being said. But I think that, like, when I go over this list and I'm looking at, um, for example, it could be, and I, and I understand it, sometimes it, it can't be, I'm trying to understand and delineate, differentiate between contractor, vendor, when, and I understand some of them may be a short-term relationship. Uh, but then there are some that's a vendor, that's three times the amount of something that's a contract. And to me, I can't wrap my mind around that where, where something greater than twenty-five thousand would come to the board for us to approve, but something on here is four times the amount that we have to approve, but it's a vendor, so we never see it.
Well, and keep in mind, in our current policy, we do have a policy that talks about if it is built into our budget. So if we budget for those expenses, then it's not a separate contract. And so there are some things in the budget.
Only if we know what we're being asked to approve a budget for. Like, that's the thing, like, I don't know if I've been asked to approve a budget for a chiropractor, something or other and whatever department. I, I don't, I don't know if I've been asked to approve that in a budget in this time of year for something that you do in May.
Yeah.
Like, that's not a reasonable thing for any person to be able to expect to understand. And if our goal is to expect our community to have the ability to be informed, we have to give that context.
I agree.
And the transparency of it all, because it builds trust.
And that's where a lot of our, like I talked, uh, the third point, you know, we talked about, we need it because it's school code, the budget. We also talked about, we need it because it gives us the authority to tax and to also expend. And then the third item on that list was really critical, and that's where the business office, the partnership with other departments and the buildings. And, and for me, those are the budget managers. So what, what, what is, what are we doing in Envision three oh eight? How does that reflect in your budget? What about other ongoing initiatives and where are those in your budgets? So we have those conversations about, um, with the budget managers. Cause even in the business office, you know, it's about that process and it's about, um, that, uh, budget managers and where they're putting those priorities, so.
But to Jen's point, when you have, when you have that many budget managers and you don't have policies and procedures to provide guidelines, then that's when we can have spending that's, um, that's outside of the scope of what we need to require or not as efficient. Uh, but I just think we have to, you know, as the ones that are, are, are the stewards of the finances, uh, when we approve a budget, I'm, I'm essentially approving every single vendor that's on this list that I'm not privy to until now. And so I think that.
Well, and, and even, just to piggyback off of that, when, you know, Ms. Simelton made a comment, and it was, it was funny to me, the one about the three hundred and fifty, four hundred thousand dollar startup cost for a system that we would really love to have. You, you even described it as the Cadillac, which I cringe when I hear Cadillac being spoken in addition to education because we don't have that money.
Exactly.
And you didn't mean it that way.
No.
But you understood it and I understood it. I don't know that our community would understand that comment. And if we're talking about the narratives and the headlines and the articles that are being written about what the status is of our financial picture and what it means, you know, we need to be able to explain in a more simplified way, and we did talk about this at the last Finance Committee meeting. Uh, how do we turn these numbers so that when you say three fifty, four hundred and you're laughing, but other people might say, we have two hundred and thirty million dollars, that doesn't seem like a big number. But you know why, that's, that's not a number we can spend because you have a bigger picture. How do we present that narrative? And it's not gonna come from the Finance Department and it's not gonna come from Dr. Petzke. That's not where his job lies. It needs to come from a collaboration. I, I wanna make sure that we're doing that part to educate on that whole picture. If we're seeing, and as Dr. Sparland's comment mentioned, we're seeing negative things that are showing that there's a lack of education in the community about what it means to educate people with tax dollars.
Well, and I'll take it a step further. Oh, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
So just, my, my, it, it's not just, it, yes, educating is important, but I'm also thinking about how do we make sure we put guardrails in place through policy to ensure that, cause we may, once we put those guard, yeah, once we put those policies in place, I mean, we, we accounted for, it was thirty million dollars that you stated on the last budget. The, the one, this one that we're looking at is only ten million of that, ten million of that. But we have to create the policies so that, and, and creating the policies just to give visibility to it could possibly, I don't know how much it'll drop, it, it may not drop it at all, but at least we know that there's controls in place.
So we do have a benchmark.
Exactly.
And then.
So it sounds like we need to have a conversation about the policy at another meeting.
A vendor questionnaire?
Something plus?
Oh, press plus?
Press plus, I mean, is there?
Yeah. No, well, but there's those policy things that we can handle and some of that, but then there's the conversations you have to have. This isn't gonna be a press plus requirement, this is what we as a community want for our schools.
Yeah, and, and it's a fine line because it, it is press plus, but it could also just be procedural. It may not even, some of it may not even be a policy. Some of it may be procedural, but we have to have a policy that informs that procedure so that, so that, cause I don't wanna handcuff the district where they can't get their job done. But at the same time, you know, we just have to have some controls.
But there's an accountability factor to this rule that we have.
Well, and to keep blindly asking us to approve things that don't.
And say that it's, cause it's in the budget.
Right, right.
I gotcha.
Jared.
Well, all I was gonna say is, you know, um, to connect and come back to this conversation, I don't know if you remember a long time ago where I was the, the lone wolf that said at some point, we were gonna need to talk about how local governance and local civics works or it's gonna backfire on us. And, and I will just say that there are unfortunately, um, those out there who take advantage of the fact that they know that the general public unfortunately does not know how local, local governance works, right? Or how these local things work. And unfortunately, they're using it to their advantage and sometimes they're winning. And so I'll take your comment and actually take it a step further where, um, unfortunately, you know, you have a situation where, um, you know, um, as you brought up, Dr. Sparland, with, um, how impact fees work and, and, and people can say whatever they want and spread misinformation about it. And, and people don't understand how impact fees work, so they'll go with what they hear. Um, and so we have to deal with that piece as well, unfortunately. Uh, and that's just a small portion of what we have to deal with on the education side. You brought up the education side and, and it is important and, I don't know.
Especially if it impedes functionality.
Impedes what?
Functionality.
Functionality.
Good, thank you, everyone. I appreciate the feedback, the insight and the conversation, so thank you.
All right, can we move on to item eight point four?
Thank you.
All right, item eight point four is an annual intergovernmental agreement with the Kendall County Food Pantry. Dr. Kinkade?
Good evening. So I'm here today with information related to our intergovernment agreement with the Kendall County Food Pantry. In your information, you have a copy of our current IGA. In collaboration with the Food Pantry, we are not requesting any changes to the current IGA. Within the IGA, there is a one-year renewal. Um, so we currently operate a satellite location, um, in collaboration with the Kendall County Community Food Pantry. We offer, um, this satellite location approximately once a month. Uh, we do take time for the summer and then also in October for our very large district food drive. Um, our first, uh, community pan, Food Pantry is on. Um, our first, uh, community pan, food pantry is on September second. If you look on our district webpage, uh, we have a link requesting volunteers. We currently still have openings and are in need for some volunteers. But I am here tonight just to present the information regarding the IGA and see if there's any questions.
Nope, thanks for doing that.
All right, hearing no other questions, item eight point five is a continuing, continuation of our conversation from June eighteenth, Board of Education Work Session in regards to our current advisory committee structure that we spoke about and proposed in June, so, Mrs. Thalkwist?
All right, uh, as we talked about in, in June, we looked to, um, find a way to moving forward to having continued, continued community input. Uh, but to, uh, in addition to having the board advisory committees where we have the four different, uh, finance policy, equity, teaching, and learning, which, uh, is conversations between two board members and a DAC administrator lead. We've seen some pieces where they were kind of operating in silos, and that we're seeing an opportunity for them to, uh, also come together with something that we're calling, uh, the Community Advisory Council. Uh, and that would be bringing the members, uh, of all of those groups together, and if there's, uh, more room to add additional members, we could do that as well. We've listed some of the examples of topics that it would be good to have the lens from all of those different committees at. Such examples are, uh, reviewing the annual communication brochure that goes out about the district for feedback and ideas on that. Um, looking at student achievement data like we talked about earlier, but also looking at it from a budget and equity implication. Uh, looking at, you know, how do we get around consensus if we ever had to make something around budget cuts? So that there isn't just the finance input piece, or just the equity, or just student learning? Because it's really about providing that vision of what do we want, and having sometimes those competing interests gather together, work together, and to come together as a common voice where they've had the opportunity to hear each other's perspectives. So you could look at it as an, a layering on, if you would, of what that would look like. Uh, and I know we've had discussions through the last couple of meetings, and we wanted to get, you know, where are we with being able to move forward, if at all, uh, with these new structures? You also see the example of a letter that we could send out. Uh, we also had a sample of bylaws that we could put together for this group, uh, if there was interest in moving forward.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we also talked about this after the June eighteenth meeting. We talked about it at a board meeting in July, and I thought the consensus was we were going to do a try before you buy, and let our current board advisory committee members try out one of these meetings and see what they thought and get their feedback. So I believe that was the consensus we reached, when did that occur?
That was not my understanding.
No.
That was my under, I mean, that we can go to the tapes, but that was the understanding we had.
I knew we were going to communicate with our current committee members.
Right, and did that happen?
Uh, we didn't have a policy or teaching and learning meeting on the schedule or calendar to do so.
Right, and we didn't have, no, it was, you said a communication about this. So what I'm saying is, this might be a little premature to have on here for information, and then again, for action in the same meeting, when the, it really, it's on for action.
Okay.
I thought we were talking-
I don't know.
No.
I mean, I just haven't seen anything go out to our committee members, and we were going to let them try this, or know about it, or get their input in it, and I haven't seen that happen.
Ursula, we haven't sent anything out to committee members?
Only about attendance.
Oh, attendance, okay. I thought we did.
So I thought that we were sending something out to our, our committee members on the commi, community advisory aspect, right?
Asking if they would like to, well, no, because there, there was some thought about this, and we'd had some public comment at that meeting from a committee member, asking for, unless I've completely imagined this entire board meeting, that did have that, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, but I don't know that there was a consensus of the group, that that was the way we were going, was it?
That was my understanding, we'll have to go to the tapes, but yeah, that was my understanding. You didn't think we were going to be communicating with the committee members?
Yes, but I thought that that was the com, the communication that, um-
Which one?
That was drafted, right? We have a draft of a communication that's going to go out.
No, well, there was no vote or anything taken, we were talking about it, and we were going to continue the conversation. So that's why I'm confused as to the action step when I hadn't seen the things go to the commu, committee members.
I think, I think we're talking about two different things.
I don't think we are.
I think one was around the advisory committee, and this, and this was-
This is around the advisory committee?
Um, this was, this is more about the vision and mission, and these were two-
The act, the item is labeled not-
This is not-
Vision and mission.
Yeah, but this is not about the advisory committee.
Neither here nor there, we obviously are not on the same page. What?
Right.
Why, what, what can we do to move this process forward? The next step is a communication to our committee members, our standing committee members, to say, "This is what we would like to try, do you want to be on the committee or off the committee," correct?
So, well, it was to get their, no, it wasn't to tell them, "Are you in or out to the new format?" The, the, I thought, what we are looking for is their input, so that we weren't just taking something from our community members, decreasing transparency by saying, "This is what we're doing, are you in or out?"
Well, I thought that would happen at the first meeting.
But that's where we kind of, in my mind, got to that try before you buy. We're going to let them have a meeting, see what this looks like, and get their feedback on it, which was the conversation.
But I, I don't understand it as, um-
Well, Latanya, wait a second, do you, we're on eight-five.
I know, I was on the wrong one.
Okay. So, and I'm also seeing this on here as, uh, let's see.
So can you explain to me, you just said, uh, that, you know, that we were going to have a meeting, sorry. That we were going to have a meeting.
You were going to have a meeting in the new format.
I want to, I know, but I want to understand what you mean by, um, inviting them to let them know that we're going to reduce transparency. I didn't, I don't understand.
So, re, the, the statement had been made by the committee member who'd spoken in public comment, and that this can, and, and it is actually my opinion too, that this can very easily be viewed as a reduction in transparency to the community members, that we created advisory committees in order to have as many people as possible be part of the process in order to educate and in order to do that. Totally agree with the multifaceted approach, it's something that's been missing. But the concern is that this has happened without any input from the people who've been serving on these committees, in some cases for like ten, twelve years, in various, like Dominic, I think you're probably the one who's on continuously long enough in two different ones, and I know that you are in favor of this. What I'm saying is, I, I'm not willing to take, make a decision about that, and that's just me. But I'm not willing to make a decision about that unless we have feedback from the people who have volunteered their time to serve it in the current capacity.
So I'm just trying to understand, you said this is your opinion, how, how is it, are you saying that it's reducing transparency?
Yes.
Because, wait, let me finish, is it reducing transparency because, um, you feel as though they haven't had a chance to have an opinion about the new format, or, or will the new format reduce transparency?
Both.
How will the new format reduce transparency?
Because we were talking in that, and I don't want to have the whole conversation from the previous meeting, so I'll refer you to that whole tape, because we do have a long agenda, but very, very briefly. We started talking about the fact that we have ten, twelve, fourteen members on some of these committees, putting all four of them in a room. We're talking about about sixty people, and that you can't have meaningful conversation in a reasonable meeting length. And what had been brought forward in those conversations had been, well, we'll reduce the number over time if we need to. That's the lack of transparency I'm speaking about. That's the concern, and the fact that it's happening without even having a conversation with any of these committee members about any of it. It just, it, it doesn't feel respectful of the time that they've put in.
I mean, they, that might have been something that was said as far as reducing the members, but I think that they also said that there's options, that there's ways of going.
Right, but I don't want to have the whole conversation tonight, because we had that conversation in July, and I thought we, we had agreed that we were going to talk to the committee members, and it's not happening.
My recollection was kind of a, you know, this is the last convening committee of finance.
Right, yeah, right.
And not necessarily, um, yes, we, we want to take your input on how to make this great, um, but we are going to be going to a committee of a whole.
I don't remember that being decided at all, unless I missed a meeting, besides the June eighteenth one, which this conversation happened after that. I don't think there was ever a decision made. It was really a, "Well, we need to do some work on this, and we should probably talk to the committee members." And, and that's what I'm asking for, is if that occurred, and I'm simply not aware.
Okay, so my, just, I want to weigh in on this. Number one, we can talk to them when there is a meeting scheduled, and right now, there are no meetings scheduled. So this moves us forward to getting all of those people in a meeting. We don't have any committee meetings scheduled here or there.
So, the letters have been going out to committee members. Mr. Gatewood, you and I know had been asked, "Do you want to continue the committee membership of this?" Without information on what that means to, to some of the, remember this?
Yeah.
So, the, we don't need to take action on a change in committee format. It seems pretty, pretty possible that there are four people that would like to have this change and three people that don't, or maybe there is a, maybe I misunderstood our last one, and that's okay. But what isn't okay is for us to shortchange our community members in the process.
But who, but, but I don't know where that's coming from, because I actually see this-
From the conversation we had the last time we talked about this.
But we haven't even talked to them to know that we're shortchanging. This is a perspective that's being taken without us even sitting down and having an actual meeting take place.
Right, which was the whole thing that I have reduced in my mind to try before you buy. Let's show them what a meeting looks like, and then explain and see what their input is about this before making a decision.
But we have to have the meeting to do that.
Yes, but we don't need to make a decision to have the meeting.
You can't have a meeting without having bylaws and a, and a reason for a committee.
I mean, you can if it's to see if this is something that would work for the community. You can have any kind of meeting you want, really.
If, if I might, and I did leave that last meeting confused about what we were supposed to be moving forward to do. And that's another reason why we had more conversations about, well, what are the next steps? So this is great that we're having the conversation. I want to make sure that we're not, if we're bringing all of the committee members together about, well, how did you like being all in the room together? We also have to talk about the different purpose of that combined group. And that combined group doesn't have the same purpose as four individual committees to do the in-depth work around. It isn't going to be, well, the policy committee or the budget committee is going to do all the work that they used to do, but now have the equity, there's still going to be the board advisory committees of those four. This is to get this, to have those complex conversations in my office, we call it admiring the problem. Like, you really want to do all of these things for student achievement, but we also want to get to twenty percent fund balance. Okay, how, how are we going to have those two ideas simultaneously? Because they work in opposition of each other a little bit.
So that makes more sense to me, and I do see in here where you're talking about four committees and the new advisory council structure, but this is different than what we had been talking about, which had been that we were switching over to the new one. But, but this isn't something that needs to be informed and, and approved in a single meeting.
So-
And we need to have their input.
So can I, because, because I actually remember this is slightly different than both versions? Sorry?
Hey, there's going to be ten different versions, ten people we're here.
And I, let's hope not, because there's only seven of us.
I mean, we have a recording, we could just use that and save some time.
I thought it was, they were going to do the committee as a whole, and then come back to, and we were going to convene, like, our individual, like-
Yeah, that's what I mean.
And then we were going to say, "Okay, how did it go?"
Yeah, that's what I mean.
But only to make the process better, not to go back to the old way, was my understanding.
Well, I'm, we don't know, because we have to get the feedback, right?
We didn't, yeah, there's no way to know if we, or if it was better, until we do it.
But the, and the one last part that I remember is that, and, and which, which made me think that we were going forward.
That's what I thought.
Is that you have four, the four committees are still convening. The only difference is the format of the meeting, but the difference is that, that whatever's going to be talked about and the agenda, the only thing that will be different is the agenda of the meeting. Format is slightly different, but the community will still be able to give input.
So all of this, Eugene, that you're telling me is not information that we have talked about at all?
No, that's-
And you're saying that, yeah, everyone's aware of this, everyone's-
No, 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 I'm saying that that's what I remember. So I'm telling you that that's what I remember about the meeting.
No, you and I had talked about the fact beforehand with the finance committee adding some people, and you'd said, "No, we're going to go to this new format instead that might solve the problems."
I've never said, I don't remember having that conversation, but when I'm-
I got the text, so, okay.
Okay, but what, but what I'm, what I'm talking about now, what I remember from the last meeting, is once we, we, we came to, was we talked about there would, the, the four meet, the four committees would remain in place. And I think that's what shifted the conversation to, oh, because I think that it wasn't a, a either or, it was a both and. And I think once the collective whole understood that it's not just moving to only a committee of, oh, of, oh, a committee of, oh, of, of whole.
Whatever we want to call it, for, for the sake of time and brevity, the, the reality is, there's a group of people that believe that this was all decided, and there's other people that believe different things. We have a lot of different thoughts, clearly there's some confusion about it. It certainly, in my mind, shouldn't be an action item until at least we're on the same page about it. We should probably talk about how long we want to talk about it, because I get the concept. The concept isn't what I'm talking about, it's the process. And the process is to make sure that we are respecting the service of our community members, and make sure that they're part of this, and that they don't feel that they've been disenfranchised by something new we're going to do and invite them to do if we choose to. How will those committee members be selected? Who will be chosen? Will it be if, if the committee chair likes you? How would that happen?
But that already happened before.
Well, but that's the thing, if we're trying to make it better, and those were some downfalls, I don't-
You're changing the target, though, like, we're talking about this, what's specifically on here tonight, what I loved about-
Right, and I don't feel that this has been communicated to our committee members as we discussed that we would do.
Okay, then that's a next step, but what I love about this new format, that we are really lacking in the way the four current committees work, is that that, that council, council, will be responsible for bringing the information and recommendations to the board, and that we know that it is backed by a diverse group, uh, like a think tank, if you will.
No, I totally agree with this, and the concept is, is something that I'm very intrigued by, and probably will serve our community well. But none of it will serve the community well if it starts off with people frustrated and disenfranchised, even coming to public comment about it, because they just haven't been communicated with.
I agree, communications needs to happen.
That's a problem, that this hasn't happened.
So are you saying that we should send out a communication that details?
And ask opinions about it.
Well, I'm just, you're saying send out a communication, telling them what the new format is, and what it's going to be, or are you saying?
Well, what do you think you should send to people?
No, I'm asking what you-
No, I want to know what you think, though, before I tell you, because I don't know what I think.
Can I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
So, so I'm clear.
Yeah, right.
So our four meetings, our policy committee's still going to meet, teaching and learning's still going to meet, but you're going to pull all of those same people and put them in a committee at the whole?
Also.
For one meeting, like, I don't, I mean, I guess?
No. What we've done is we've combined a couple of different experiences, uh, that we've all had in committees, meetings across, you know, throughout our career. So if the first, when you talk about the four committees, Eugene stated that, you know, the four committees would still exist, but they existed in a different way, that you, we still have the, uh, the finance committee, but the finance committee is now, uh, the two board members, the district administrators, it's still open, it's still an open meeting. The current, the current people that are on that committee aren't, aren't, they're not on that, they're not on that committee. They can come to the meetings and participate, obviously, through public comment, but those, all, all the people on the current committees would be invited to be part of this community advisory council. Those are the, those are the component one and component two, and this is exactly what we talked about on June eighteenth in the summertime.
But then we had a conversation after that, Dr. Sparland, do you remember the, the conversation that followed?
I remember a conversation, that there was no direction given, that there, we had, we had a conversation. That's why we're bringing this back as information tonight to, so we can have, so we can have some ac, no, it's not action, to have some actual direction so we can go, so we can implement the will of the board.
It is on action, it's item ten point seven.
It's ten point seven.
For the letter to be approved, for the communication to go out to the members.
That's, that's the whole point of what we're trying to get to, is this okay to start communicating to them and starting to move forward so we can actually meet with them?
My understanding was that we would be gaining input into the thoughts. I, I get that the people who did, made the decision on what it would be nice to look like, because you've had it, that's probably a really good suggestion. I'm not talking about the content, I'm not talking about anything to do with whether it's a good idea or not. I kind of like the idea. I kind of like the idea. That is not what I'm talking about. I, I am sure we all love the, the position. What I'm talking about is the fact that we didn't communicate this with current members and ask their input.
That's what, that's.
But we didn't, no, 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 you're communicating what's going to happen. We didn't communicate asking for input, which is what my understanding was that we would be doing.
Okay, can I ask?
Before the decision rather than after.
Can I ask, so when you're asking for input from those individuals, what is it that they're giving input on? Are, are you saying that you're looking for them to have um, have an actual meeting, which you're, you're, you're mocking what, what it would look like and then you're asking them?
That is exactly what I took away from the last time we talked about this.
Okay.
Where everyone, uh-huh, mhm, I think, okay. Or something happened and we weren't actually in agreement on what we thought was going to happen from that.
I think so. I think we weren't in, in agreement, but let's get in agreement now or let's get however many people want to go forward, so.
Well, we know we want to continue the same four committees, so a lot of them need to restock. I don't want to send this out yet. I want to get their input on what they think a better version would look like. So it's not just for people to say.
But that's not, that, that's not the goal.
But you don't want to do that and that's okay, but I do want to do that.
So you can vote no. Experts who've already looked into how that process works and what is a best way to do it, they've already told us what it, what it should look like and what's the best.
Who's they?
The subject matter experts.
No, but this is a board committee. We're the subject matter experts at the board committee.
But they're, but we don't, we don't have the subject matter in which to say around the state of Illinois or whatever.
No, but we want to know what our community thinks about our district, not around the state of Illinois, but in our district, what do we think?
But that's not to say that we can't get that information from, from this format. So we're, I, I'm.
No, I agree. You and I disagree about whether or not it's worth getting.
Can we just send it to vote then, as it is?
You can get input at the first meeting, right?
But this is presenting it as already accomplished. What is there to provide input in? That's where the resentment lies.
They can provide input when it starts.
Well, they could have input on how this.
If I may be so bold, I, I, like, listen, I don't know how else to phrase this, but I just don't think the seven of us are going to see eye to eye on this. I would, I, I would love to table this discussion and just go to, go to, go to the vote and it's going to be how it's going to be. Like, I'm like, like, I, I think we're trying to, we're trying to find a way for all seven of us to agree. It's just not going to happen.
I think you're probably right.
Okay.
So then, what, what we are voting on is the communication that we see in this document and whether or not we want this sent out to all of the individuals who are currently on the committee, excluding those who have already been sent, um, documents indicating that their attendance um, did not, um, include them on the committee going forward. Okay, so who all, by show. No, we can send, we can just send it to vote.
You just, we don't talk about it now. It's ten seven.
You got an action item down below.
Yeah, ten point seven.
So, but, but also can we just have a, a quick notice that we have another item up that's information and action at the same meeting? And we do have agreements that we will avoid that unless it's time sensitive and I don't know that this was a time sensitive one that needed to be information and action at the same meeting.
But we've already talked about it twice.
But it's in information and action tonight also and it's a different format than last time.
No, it's the same format.
Eugene, like literally we have minutes, like that can, like, I, I get that we have a different recollection, but I don't want to have a conversation about that. What I want to have is a noticing that this is another item that isn't on for information and it is on for action and we have agreed that we'll try not to do that. Clearly, we want to notice that that happened and try not to do that next time.
So noted.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to vote.
No.
Oh, later, okay. Sorry.
Can we move eight point six, it's ten o'clock and that's a longer conversation and I realize that we've already moved it once. But quite frankly, it's ten o'clock.
Yeah, who want, who, show hands, who wants to move this?
I don't think we have a choice.
I, I, I'd make a motion to move it. Yeah, or have someone make a motion.
They're saying take it off.
I make a motion to move it to eight point six in the next meeting.
Yeah.
Second.
And then also, action item.
We got to vote on that, right?
Wait till you get there.
Okay, wait till you get there for the action item that would remove the mission statement.
What are we doing?
Moving eight point six.
She made a motion, somebody needs to second.
Mr. Plover.
Jared seconded it already.
Mr. Plover.
That's not a fair pool if you're.
Second.
No, aye.
Oh, aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
No.
Ms. Simelton?
Uh, so this is on mission, right?
Aye. Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Swanson?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Oh, I'm sorry, motion passes six one. Can I have a motion to go into closed session?
I make a motion to enter a closed session under statute five ILCS one twenty slash two C one. The appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in an educational setting or specific volunteers of the public body or legal counsel for the public body. Five ILCS one twenty slash two C two, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees.
Second.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Simelton?
Aye.
Mr. Plover?
Aye.
Ms. Swanson?
Aye.
Motion pass.
I do have one comment. So we're back in the session, right?
Yeah.
I do have one comment. I've been patient about it because I know we had the interviews, but I'm going to be honest with you. If, if we start, like the last two meetings, I've been fine with it. But if we start putting all this closed session stuff, because I'm telling you, I'm getting comments from people, they don't like this. They do not like us voting without the cameras on.
I agree.
And I'm going to tell you right now, if this continues after these interviews, I'm voting no on everything. We need to start, I do not like the secrecy and I do not like the non-transparency. So I've been patient with it the last two times. I haven't said anything because I get it that we're doing interviews and everything. But if we go back to this, I'm telling you, I'm going to start voting no on everything.
We had no intentions on doing that.
I know that. I'm, I, I'm not saying you did anything. I'm just making sure that, um, making sure everybody understands my boundaries, that's all. And I, I understand why we had to do it. I understand why we had to do it. I just don't want us to get into the habit, that's it. And I'll be quiet because I got to get them out of here by eleven thirty so that they wouldn't have the office pool.
Oh, it was their office pool. What is the office?
I want in though, I want ten percent.
No, that's not fair.
I'm kidding.
Just, just first of that, I'm talking.
All right, move it.
Okay, let's go, let's do action real quick.
Let's do, let's get it.
Come on, action, ten point one. Consideration and approval of a resolution approving Village of Oswego acquisition of district property.
I make a motion to approve a resolution approving Village of Oswego's acquisition of district property located at Oswego East High School for Wolf's Crossing Road Improvements pursuant to one zero five ILCS five five dash twenty nine for a total of seventy-five thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
Was that you, Eugene?
Yes.
Mr. Serone?
Yes.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Plover?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
No.
Ms. Simelton?
Aye.
Motion passes four two. Ten point two, um, action item approval, resolution calling for a public hearing on the, of financial, I'm sorry, fiscal year twenty-three budget. Can I have a motion please?
I make a motion to approve a resolution calling for a public hearing on fiscal year twenty-three tentative budget and to place it on file for public inspection until the public hearing for said budget on the twenty-sixth day of September twenty twenty-two.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Simelton?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Plover?
Aye.
Ten point three, action item approval of Del Webb pedestrian bridge project. Can I have a motion please?
I make a motion to approve the temporary construction agreement and upon completion, the maintenance repair or replacement of the portion of asphalt path on our property as presented.
Second.
Ms. Simelton? Can you come back around to me?
No.
No, you can't.
Okay, for a discussion, I, I did have a visual up here that probably we should have had last time. So what you're looking at real quick is Benarsec and Wolf's Crossing in the upper portion, the old road coming down the middle. And then you've got the development on the east side. So as you see in that, that, uh, where the pedestrian bridge is, I'm looking at this, laser light's not working, but you can see the heavy red line is the path across the old one. And that bridge is going to be built no matter what. They're going to build a path then and you see that path winds through, that pink area is not our property. Our property begins at the top of that pink path, so they're going to have a whole path that they walk on. And then that one little part that's about twenty feet long, um, and ten feet wide, like a normal walking path, that connects the path and that's on our property. So it would be the kids, they could end the path right there and have the kids walk in the grass. And their liability would be the same if somebody falls on the grass as opposed to the pavement. So I hope that paints a little bit better picture of what the walking path does.
And I appreciate it, Mr. Brawley had given me a call.
So this up here, right?
Yeah, that's, that's on the grass.
Mr. Brawley gave me a call and, and explained and asked the question. I think, I think you guys don't know what we're talking about. We're talking about a twenty-foot bike path. We're not talking about a, a pad at the bottom of the stairs. So really, I think he reached out to get the clarification.
It's per se since now.
Okay.
I was, I drove over there, I said, we'll just go look.
Right.
And I'm like, how are you going to do this? So this is per se.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that, that was in the drawings, but it was a little, little varied, so.
Hi. Mr. Plover?
Did somebody second it?
Yes.
Okay, aye, 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 aye.
Let's talk, I had asked if she could not have to vote.
Aye.
Did you vote?
Yes, I did.
Aye. Ms. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Ten point four, action item. Oh, I'm sorry, motion passes, uh, five one. Ten point four, action item approval of Kendall County over levy extension for fiscal year twenty twenty.
I make a motion to approve the resolution abating a portion of the taxes here two four, levy for the year twenty twenty-two to pay debt service on the outstanding general obligation capital appreciation school bonds series two thousand eight of Community Unit School District three oh eight, Kendall, Kane, and Will Counties of Illinois.
Second.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Plover?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Simelton?
Aye, motion passes six zero.
Ten point six, action item approval ratification.
Ten point five.
I'm sorry. Another one I do. Ten point five, approval of resolution to transfer money from working cash to capital projects.
I make a motion to approve the resolution to transfer five million thirty-one thousand five hundred and seventy dollars from working cash to capital projects fund.
Second.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Simelton?
Aye.
Mr. Plover?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Ten point six, approval ratification to transfer money from working cash to capital projects for technology.
I make a motion to approve the ratification to transfer a hundred and fifty-eight thousand two hundred and seventy dollars from working cash to capital projects for the technology fund.
One question. Second.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Mr. Plover?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Simelton?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Ten point seven, action on name clearing hearing. Can I have a motion please?
No, ten point seven. Is approval of new format?
What? That's not what mine says. I mean, action on.
Is that, that, that's ten point eight. I'm sorry if I don't have the number right, but ten point seven.
It's right.
Can I have a motion to approve the new format of the board advisory committee and the communication to current members?
I make a motion to approve the new format of the board advisory committees and the communication to current members.
Oh, sorry.
Ms. Simelton?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye. Oh, no, sorry, uh, ten seven. Ten seven's no.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Mr. Plover?
No.
Motion passes four two. Ten point eight, approval of building administrator contract.
No.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's it.
Now we're going back to naming, okay. Ten point eight, um, action on name clearing hearing.
I have, have an action. You need to refresh. I was not able to put that in till after we talked about it.
For you know, you can read it from here. Now, Ursula Stott, I feel like she might be breaking the system. What time did we have, Ursula?
I make a motion to affirm the hearing officer's findings of facts and conclusions that Mr. Daryl Ludner was an at-will employee in his roles with Delta Aquatics who was lawfully removed from those roles and that there was no basis for a name clearing hearing with respect to said removal.
Second.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Simelton?
Aye.
Mr. Plover?
Aye.